Good morning and welcome to City Hall. We're going to get started with the invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance. Dr. Maceless Fields is the pastor at Allen Chapel AME Church. He'll lead us in the invocation. Sports fans may remember Dr. Fields as a longtime football and track coach at Luther High School. And he was telling me at one point, the superintendent even had him drive the bus. You better be ready to do it all in our school system. Thanks for coming down, Dr. Fields. When he's finished, I'll ask Councilman Stone Cypher. He'll lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. But would everyone please stand at this time?
Let us pray. O most loving Father, who wills us to give thanks for all things. Oh God, grant us a vision for our city to help us dread nothing but the loss of you, to cast all our cares on you who cares for us. Preserve us from faithless fears and worldly anxieties. And grant that no cloud of this mortal life may hide from us the light that love which forever dwells in us. Direct us, oh Lord, in all our doings with your most gracious favor and bless us with your continued help. In all our works that we have begun, that it be done with you in mind, that we may glorify your holy name and by your mercy obtain everlasting life through Jesus Christ our Lord. Amen.
Amen. Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And with 4,000 of them on the payroll, you can imagine how difficult it is to choose one as our employee of the month. We have done that today. I want you to show your appreciation for Stephanie Smith, the public information, marketing and the print shop. Stephanie, where are you? Juana. Congratulations. Your two daughters are here? Yeah. Why don't you two stand? I know it's the last thing you want to do, so I'm going to make you do it. We have a resolution. I'll ask the clerk to read it.
Well, Stephanie Smith has been a city employee for five years and is a production specialist in the public information office's print shop. Whereas Stephanie provides specialized printing and document reproduction services, knowledgeably using high-volume print and finishing equipment. Stephanie works with department contacts throughout the city to ensure employees' print jobs are completely, accurately, and in a timely manner. Whereas Stephanie prints a majority of the print shop's 2,300 annual jobs, averaging over 5 million copies per year. Stephanie's skills and professionalism are essential to producing important materials in a timely and high-quality manner for all city departments, benefiting internal operations as well as the public. Whereas Stephanie always steps up and does her best to accommodate requests, providing honest communication and committing to reduce administrative burden and costs on staff. Whereas Stephanie's commitment and hard work makes her an indispensable part of the city's print shop. Whereas this council desires to recognize Stephanie Smith for her dedication, professionalism, and commitment to the residents of the city of Oklahoma City. Now therefore, be it resolved by the mayor and council of the city of Oklahoma City that they do hereby thank and commend Stephanie Smith, June 2017, South Oklahoma City Kiwanis Club Employee of the Month.
Need a motion? All right, cast your votes. What a shock. It's unanimous. Congratulations.
Thank you. I am truly honored for this award.
You bet. Tell all your coworkers we appreciate you. Girls, thanks for coming in. All right, we'll call the meeting to order. We're on item four of the council agenda. Oh, let me hold that back up. Is Dr. Goodlow here? Dr. Goodlow's driven in from Tulsa. He's going to give us his presentation on IMSA. Why don't we let you go ahead and do that so you can get back to your daily work? This is on item 9J in the council agenda. And this is the annual report. Is that right?
Yes, that is correct, Mr. Mayor. Always a pleasure to be with the council and I am very, very grateful for the opportunity to present some information to you this morning. Also very appreciative of being able to move up on the agenda. I am leaving directly from here to train some EMTs and paramedics that are new to our system here in Oklahoma City. So the extra time you've afforded us this morning will be in good hands with those folks. So this is the presentation for your review and what I hope to be your approval for the Medical Control Board Annual Budget. The Medical Control Board is the Physician Advisory Board for our EMS system. This specifically deals with the medical oversight component, independent of IMSA, the Oklahoma City Fire Department, the Tulsa Fire Department, and a myriad of suburban fire departments that comprise the EMS system for metropolitan Oklahoma City and Tulsa. Joining me this morning are several members from our Office of Medical Director's Staff, David Howerton, who is the Director of Clinical Affairs here in the metropolitan Oklahoma City area, Jamil Rahman, who is our Director of Health Information Services, Ms. Jennifer Jones, our Executive Assistant, and Dr. Curtis Knowles, our Assistant Medical Director. Dr. Knowles is a pediatric emergency medicine specialist. It's based here at Children's Hospital in the OU Health Science Center. So I'd like to point out on this year's budget that we have always continued to try to limit the cost wherever possible. We obviously are committed to the best emergency medical care possible for the citizens of Oklahoma City and the other communities that we serve. There is a slight increase in our budget from last year, but both last year's budget and this year's anticipated budget are less than fiscal year '15-'16. So we are always looking at ways to minimize the cost without obviously sacrificing the quality of care. I would point out that this system continues to be recognized nationally and internationally as one of the most progressive EMS systems for sudden cardiac arrest care. This was featured in a cover article in the Journal of Emergency Medical Services back in January, which is the most widely read publication in the field of emergency medical services. We also were featured in the cover article in the following month's edition of Journal of Emergency Medical Services, specifically looking at how we have very carefully, evidence-based, clinically validated, reduced the use of warning lights and sirens in our ambulances by 66 percent. This results in significant safety to citizens that are traveling around ambulances as they are going to and from the scenes of medical emergencies and obviously increases the safety for our EMS personnel. We very, very carefully look at all of these calls to make sure that this is not coming at any cost clinically to patients. I'm very happy to tell you that in over three years of those operations now, we have yet to find a single case of any type of clinical detriment. This is recognized as a best practice in the EMS industry. I'd also like to just share one example of why I'm so proud of the over 4,300 EMTs, paramedics, and dispatchers that comprise our EMS system. We started on a project last summer that looked specifically at some of the stressors in our EMS system, some of the mental and physical wear and tear on our personnel that was contributing to some early departures. Frankly, EMTs and paramedics that were leaving our system much earlier than we would have anticipated their career to be. What we have done is looked at ways to provide a little bit more downtime between their calls and being able to get them off shift at their anticipated and scheduled end-of-shift time. And we're doing this by decreasing the individual mission time. A mission time is from the time of 911 call until that ambulance is then available for service. We have reduced the typical mission time in Oklahoma City three minutes and in Tulsa nine minutes. Now, while that may obviously sound like a threefold difference in Tulsa, realize that the typical mission time was already a bit shorter in Oklahoma City than Tulsa. Part of that is the advantage of more hospitals in Oklahoma City. We have a more rapid turnover at the hospital because of increased availability of beds here in Oklahoma City. While three minutes and nine minutes may not necessarily sound like much time, it adds up when we are responding to over 200,000 calls a year. What that has done for your EMS system is it has allowed us to put back over 20,000 hours of ambulance readiness capability in our system at zero cost to the citizens of Oklahoma City. That's over two and a quarter ambulances that we have effectively added back in the fleet, over $1 million a year at zero cost to the citizens. I'm not taking one cent of credit for that. The real heroes in this are the frontline dispatchers, EMTs, and paramedics that have achieved that efficiency in your EMS system. So I hope you'll join me in recognizing what a wonderfully talented and dedicated cadre of EMTs and paramedics that we have. We are collectively devoted to not just the best care, but doing so in a very respectful manner and fully recognizing the cost efficiency that we can. We don't want to spend any more than we absolutely need. So happy to answer any questions about our budget, happy to answer any questions about our EMS system. It's always a privilege and a pleasure to be with you this morning.
Dr. Goodlow, could you get more into the three-minute and the nine-minute between the two cities? What exactly does that mean on the mission?
Yeah, so what we look at is every part of that mission, from the time of 911 call, how that call is processed, how those ambulances and fire department resources are allocated, dispatched, the response time to the scene of that medical emergency, the actual time on-scene delivering care, the response time back to the hospital destination, and then the turn time from, you know, arrival at the hospital until that ambulance is physically ready for its next call. All of those time increments together comprise what we call a mission time. And so we looked at all of those variables. We wanted to be very careful that trying to address efficiencies, to increase efficiencies in any one of those intervals did not simply shift the time to another interval, that we actually did trim the overall mission time. And so there is a certain amount of time that obviously has to be expended on scene. Good, fast care is only impressive when it is the correct, accurate care done quickly. So bad care done quickly is not good care. So we have to be careful that we're not speeding the clock up at the cost of the quality of care. We have a brand-new protocol in place just within the last several months in our EMS system that specifically deals with on-scene coordination. The fire departments and IMSA are talking better than I've ever seen in nearly a decade here now. So there's a lot of efficiencies to be there. And honestly, the care, not only has the care not suffered, the care has improved because of more efficient, more continuous communication between the agencies comprising our system.
Well, I know our citizen surveys indicate that people are very pleased with the level of service they're getting, so please thank your staff for that.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Counsel, have any questions? All right. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
We do need a motion on this item to accept the report. Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. All right, now we're on to item four. It's the Journal of Council Proceedings. Four A's to receive the journal for May 30th and June 6th, and four B is to approve the journal for May 9th, 16th, and 23rd. All right, comments or questions on the journal? Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. And item five is requests for uncontested continuances.
Mayor, just one this morning. It's item 7S. 7S is the RFP for the old jail facility. And when we were putting it out, we put out the wrong draft. We uploaded the wrong draft of the RFP. And so we had to strike it and bring that back and reissue it in an upcoming meeting.
All right. Any other requests for uncontested continuances? Move on to item six. It's revocable permits. Our first is in Ward 6. It's a request from MTM Recognition to hold the Run for Recognition. Is there anyone here representing that organization? Come forward. We will need your name and address for the record.
Mike Ketcherside, 30... I actually put my home address, but the corporate address for the race is 3201 Southeast 29th Street, Oklahoma City, 73115.
All right, tell us about the Run for Recognition.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council, for allowing me to present the sixth annual Run for Recognition. It's... Formerly, it was the MTM Run for Recognition in Dell City at MTM, which was formerly Midwest Trophy. We decided to move the race this year for our sixth annual event to downtown Oklahoma City to try to gain more awareness and grow the event for Special Olympics. That's the cause. And 100% of the proceeds go to Special Olympics. So in conjunction with the newest location of OK Runner on... Between 6th and 7th on Broadway, that will be the staging area. The event will start across the street. We... That's their grand opening for OK Runner. It'll be this Saturday, the 17th. So we're hoping that you will approve this event.
How far are people running?
It's a 5K and a one-mile fun run.
Okay. Well, thanks for doing that. Is there a motion? It's in Ward 6, and Meg's not here to bless it. Okay, we have a motion in a second. Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
All right. The next item is a revocable right-of-way use permit with OKC Pride to hold the OKC Pride Weekend. Is there anyone here representing OKC Pride? Good morning. Are you Gordon?
I am Gordon. Good morning, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for the consideration for OKC Pride. This will be either...
We'll need your name and address.
Okay, sorry. Gordon Bisnaska, 11004 Windmill Road, Oklahoma City. And this will be either our 29th or 30th, depends on how you're counting the starting point for OKC Pride. But we're very excited and motivated this year. We will start our event on Friday afternoon and evening. We're going to have a block party. Three great bands are going to perform for us. We'll have food trucks. We'll have festival. We also have a fun zone or a family zone that's kind of a little bit away from the more adult activities. That would be for the younger people. We have a lot of families within our community and with our friends and allies as well. Sunday is, of course, going to be the parade. This parade will go down 39th Street and over on Young's. And I really want to express my appreciation to your City Services Department, to your Oklahoma City Police Department. Their input has just been great and been wonderful to work with everybody.
Glad to hear that. It's in Ward 2.
Yeah, a couple of comments about this year's parade and festival. This is not just a parade and festival. It's the largest festival and parade, I believe, in the state. It's enormous. It's 100,000 people. It's an act of solidarity and a celebration of diversity. So it's essentially a political event, the parade. You have many, many elected officials, many, many different organizations, religious organizations. And I want to echo your... First, your thoughts about the police department. I really enjoy the relationships that's developing, especially last year after the massacre of 49 people, and the interaction between the participants and the Oklahoma City Police Department, I think, is very, very healthy. The second thing I want to acknowledge, I see Paula Lewis, the Oklahoma City School Board Chair. Under her leadership and Aurora Laura, last night, the school board unanimously voted to participate in this year's parade. There'll be a school bus in the parade, and I think that's very, very exciting, and I think that's very helpful. I would hope that we would give some consideration as a council. Maybe we could walk with the school board, with the OKCPS for a couple of reasons. One, as soon as we decide next week on the sales tax and GO bond selection, the very next meeting, we're going to be presented with a more than $100 million public subsidy for a convention center hotel. That more than $100 million public subsidy will all go, which is sales tax and property tax, basically enough to fund 110 officers for a decade, will all go to one man, Robert Rowling, from Omni Hotels, who has evoked protests across the country from the LGBT community because of his endless funding of candidates hostile to the LGBT community. He also owns Gold's Gems, and so there have been protests over the last decade. So it's a controversial choice, but we can insulate ourselves from choices like that with participation in parades such as this. And so the other thing, the other politically awkward thing I would say, is that as many people as have participated, hundreds and hundreds of elected officials, right, millions of people observing, there has never, in my knowledge, been a elected official of any branch of government that is of the Republican Party, whether that's school board, city council, county commissioner, sheriff, mayor, state rep, state senator, U.S. Congressman, U.S. Senator, governor, never, in all the 40 years, 30 years that you described. I would hope that this would be the year that we would tear down that wall. There's seven of us on the council. We could march with the school, and we could tear down that wall, and all it takes is the first act of courage, and others will follow without a move approval.
All right. Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Thanks, Gordon. All right, the next request is with the Oklahoma Baptist Homes for Children. They're going to be holding a Miles for Smiles event in Ward 4 and 5. Are you Scott?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, good morning, Scott.
Scott Conrad, 16301 Southwestern Avenue, Oklahoma City, Oklahoma. All right, yes, this is our 17th annual bike ride. We have about 400 to 500 bike riders that come out, and we work with IMSTAT, the Northern Fire Department, Oklahoma City Fire Department, to make our ride a safe ride for our participants. So we're glad that you guys support this, and we'd love to have you come ride in our event. Our longest is 56, our shortest is 10. You get to choose.
Well, appreciate that. And what should people do if they want to be a part of it?
They can go online and register at Oklahoma Baptist Homes for Children, and it'll be our Miles for Smiles registration.
All right. Is there a motion? Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Thanks. And our final revocable right-of-way use permit is with Oklahoma Lawyers for Children. They're going to hold the Masquerade 5K in Ward 2. Is there anyone here representing this event? Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, members of council. My name is John Osland with UltraMac Sports at 2300 Brookside Avenue, Edmond, Oklahoma, representing Lawyers for Children for their second annual Masquerade 5K, held in conjunction with the Juvenile Justice Center over there. A great 5K and one-mile fun run benefiting the work that Oklahoma Lawyers for Children do on behalf of the youth community here in Oklahoma City. We've been, like I said, this will be their second running of the event in the summer, so we're looking forward to a great run at 8:00 in the morning, not this Saturday, but next Saturday. Invite all of you guys to come out and join us.
All right. It's in Ward 2. Ed, you want to make a motion here? Cast your votes. It passes unanimously.
Thank you all so much. Have a great day.
All right, we'll recess the council meeting, convene as the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority. All right, we have a motion and a second on the MFA. Any comments or questions? Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. We'll adjourn the OC MFA and convene as the Oklahoma City Public Property Authority. Okay, we have a motion and a second. There are seven items here. Comments or questions on the PPA? All right, cast your votes. It passes unanimously. We'll adjourn the OC PPA, convene as the Oklahoma City Environmental Assistance Trust. Four items. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions here? All right, cast your votes. It passes unanimously. We'll adjourn the OCEAT and reconvene the council meeting with the consent docket. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any individual considerations from council? Okay. Z?
Yeah, Z is a... We're awarding contract Atlas, Atlas Paving Company for... It's a 2007 bond project that is repaving Northwest 10th Street from Council to Morgan Road. Costs 1.2 million, and the timetable is the construction's supposed to start in July and then end in February of 2018. So everybody who lives in that area, be ready for some construction.
All right, thanks for pointing that out. Badly needed. Any other comments on the consent docket? All right, let's vote. It passes unanimously. All right, on to the concurrence docket. All right, we have a motion and a second on the concurrence. Any individual considerations? All right, cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item 9 is items requiring separate votes. We'll start with a series of zoning cases. The first is in Ward 7, 1401 Northeast 8th Street. It's currently C3 community commercial, and it would become an R2 medium-low residential district if approved. John?
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The planning commission did approve this, as well as staff gave recommended for approval. I do want to recognize, I do have my planning commissioner here, Dr. Cooper. I move for approval.
Okay. Is there anyone here speaking against this item? All right, cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item 982 has been... Let's see, it's been deferred before, but it's before us today, and I think we're going to go ahead and hear it today, David?
Yes, Your Honor.
That's your preference?
Yes.
It's at 8937 South May. It's currently C3 community commercial and CUP 44 Community Unit Plan overlay, and it would be put into a new spud if it's approved.
Yes, and we've had discussions with the applicants, so I move for approval.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions here on item 982? All right, cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item 983 is a zoning case in Ward 6 at 711 North Douglas Avenue. It's currently C1 neighborhood commercial, and it would be put into a new spud. Is the applicant here today? Yeah, why don't you come on up? So many people here, I can't find staff. Did this pass the planning commission?
It did.
Okay.
Just a chance.
Okay.
Mark Seibel, 517 Northwest 49th Street.
Yeah, tell us what you have in mind here. Yeah, tell us what you have in mind here.
This is a four-unit quadplex. It's a conversion of a dilapidated lot into what is going to be four efficiency studio-type apartment units.
All right. Was it unanimous at planning commission?
I believe it was.
Okay. Is there a motion? Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Thank you. All right, item 9A4 is a zoning case in Ward Four at 6728 South Hudson Avenue. It's currently R1, single-family residential, and it would be put into a new spud if approved. Todd?
Is there anyone here to speak against this item? Your Honor, I'll go ahead and move for approval.
All right, we're voting on 9A4. Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item 9A5 is a zoning case...
Just wanted, that was the Southern Oaks Wellness Project with the City County Health Department.
Okay, good project. 9A5 is a zoning case in Ward Six, 1301 Northwestern Avenue. It's currently inside a spud and has some other zoning designations, and it'd be put into a new spud if approved. Is the applicant here today? Yeah, come on forward.
Good morning, Tim Johnson with Johnson &amp; Associates, 1 East Sheridan Avenue, Oklahoma City, Oklahoma. This is a case that we had a rezoning, we weren't involved, my firm wasn't involved in that. The owner actually purchased additional property to the south, so we came back with a new zoning case. Met with the neighbors to the west several times, and at planning commission, we did receive unanimous approval. The immediate neighbors to the west on 12th Street had requested that we upgrade the fence, and which we agreed to do, and changed the language in the PUD. There was also a neighbor that had showed up in concern of the drive-through. So on the north block, so on the south block, it's a surface parking with underground parking underneath it, serving a retail center that faces 12th Street, right across the street from the Shell Station, immediately across the street from DT1, or DDD1. And then on the north building, I'll show you an elevation of the building, very iconic building, matching size and structure type of the Sunbeam Home to the North, the Catholic Charities to the east, west. So it's a real improvement to this block, and I think the neighborhood sees it as that. The concern was that we have a single drive-through lane, our lower-level use is a bank, and we have a single drive-through lane that is limited to banking hours, basically eight to six. We're gonna reutilize the existing alleyway by repaving it, and all of our circulation and access is encouraging traffic to go out to western. The neighbors did not want us to close the alley. There are a couple of homes back here that use the alley for their drives, but the alley is in really poor shape.
Okay.
So let me show you real quick the elevation. This is what the elevation of the building, this is what you'd see from Klassen looking west. This is the retail. The south building is just a two-story in height. The PUD allows for the upper level to be utilized for residential, but that's not anticipated at this time to be functional, cost-wise, so. And then the taller building, we put a lot of restrictions on the restaurant on the roof, pushed it away from the neighborhood. Basically, the height of this new building is about as high as that blue older home that's being used for a law building right now, because it's very tall, it's two and a half stories. And so, we provided that, like I said, planning commission approved it unanimously with the few additional requirements on the fence that we added.
It's like a really nice project.
Yeah, we're excited about it.
Yeah, it'll help Klassen a lot, yeah.
I'll move the item.
Okay. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tim. All right, item 9A, let's see, which one are we on? Six? 9A6 is a zoning case in Ward Four at 10300 South Souna Road. It's currently AA Agriculture, and it would be put into a new spud if it's approved. Todd?
Is there anyone here to speak about this item?
Randy Malone, 209 Southwest 89th Suite F. I represent the applicant. Does anyone have any questions? This place has basically been there about 50 years, as, well, all I can describe this is a honky-tonk. It's had a mixed beverage license in the past, probably 15 years ago at the latest time. It currently holds a low-point beer license, and the purpose is, we're here today to try to get a mixed beverage license.
Okay. You have a, because we can't have enough honky-tonks. That's all right.
I did have one question for you. The barn to the north, that doesn't fall onto this property, does it?
It does not, no.
Okay. Thank you. Your Honor, I move for approval.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Thanks. All right, we're on to item 9B. This is the closing of South Midwest Boulevard. It's in Ward Four. You good to go with this, Todd?
I am. I can go ahead and motion for approval, Mayor.
Okay, is there a second? Okay, we're on item 9B. Is there anyone here hoping to speak against this item? Okay, cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item 9C is an ordinance that's being introduced today, and we'll be calling a public hearing for next week, and a final hearing on July 5th, and Rick Wickencamp's gonna have a presentation for us. Rick?
Good morning, Mayor and City Council. I'm Brooke Wickencamp, Assistant Director of Development Services Department. Presentation this morning is concerning a change to our community cat ordinance. With this change, the ordinance would still allow us not to return cats if they have been abused or at risk. However, it would eliminate the requirement that we seek and obtain the permission of the person who brings the cat into the shelter, who complained about the cat, before we return it to its place of origin. The reason that we're bringing this recommendation to you is that we feel like we just aren't maximizing the benefit to the community that we can under this program. What we anticipate, if we can fully implement this program, is that there'll be fewer cat-related problems for our citizens. We also anticipate that the humane treatment of cats will improve in our city. I think there'll be fewer free-roaming cats, fewer cat-related complaints, fewer cats coming into the shelter, and ultimately, fewer cats being euthanized. Our history for community cats in Oklahoma City really was started by the Central Oklahoma Humane Society. They formed in 2007, and I think that they started a program shortly after that. We actually got involved with them in 2012 formally, where we entered into an agreement, and we really thought we'd return about 1,000 to 1,500 cats that first year, and we only returned 360. In calendar year 2016, we returned 411, which isn't much of an increase. And this year, we're anticipated to return 281 cats. Overall, the news has been good. Our cat intake, going back to 2009, although it's gone up and down a couple of years, it has steadily decreased. We think that's for a lot of reasons. We formed a lot of valuable partnerships, we have a lot of really good volunteers. We've tried to educate the public about the benefits of spay and neuter, and we think there are many, many good, responsible cat owners who have their cats spayed and neutered. Our staff also works very hard, we do a lot of adoption events, so things have looked better over time. Graphically, if we look at the comparison between 2009 and 2016, it looks like this. That dark color is the cats that are euthanized, and the green color are the cats that are released alive. And from 2009 to 2016, we had a 28% drop in our intake, which is very good. Our live release rate went from 36% to 66%, which is also very good. But compared to other cities that have fully implemented this program, meaning they don't need to seek permission to return a cat, they've had better results. Looking at a few of these cities, Huntsville, Alabama, from 2009 to 2016, their cat intake has dropped by 61%. Their live release rate's gone from 10% to 98%. In Waco, Texas, they've had a 73% drop in intake, live release rate from 36% to 87%. Looking at a couple of cities that are closer to our size, in Jacksonville, Florida, has really been a pioneer in this program, they've had a decrease of 45% in their cat intake from 2008 to 2016. Live release rate went from 12% to 95%. In Indianapolis, Indiana, again, from 2008 to 2016, a 59% drop in cat intakes, live release rate 31% to 90%. In terms of community complaints, Jacksonville returned 5,400 complaints, or 5,400 cats, excuse me, in their first year, and only had 12 complaints. Charleston received only three complaints when they implemented a program during their first year. And we really believe this is because spaying and neutering reduces nuisance behaviors, such as yowling, marking, roaming, and fighting. And part of the benefit of doing the trap, neuter, and return program under community cats is that cats are very territorial. So if you remove a cat from a community that had the resources to exist there, then another cat's gonna probably move in, and that's gonna be an intact cat. And that cat will exhibit these behaviors and will also contribute to the unwanted live births. So we really think this is a win-win program. Data shows that it works for our citizens and our cats. It's supported by the premier animal rights groups in this country, the American Society for the Prevention of Cruelty to Animals, and the Humane Society of the United States. It's also supported by the Central Oklahoma Humane Society, who is our partner in this program. The thing that we do is when there's an animal-related problem, we respond, and we show up to address that problem when the people who created that problem aren't there. And we feel like that we shouldn't just be reactive to those problems, we feel like we should be proactive, that we should seek out programs or program improvements that will actually benefit our citizens and also the animals in our community, and we think this change will do that. Of course, we will monitor it very closely, and if we have some impact that we didn't anticipate, then we'll make adjustments, and we'll bring those adjustments back to you, because what we really want is for those benefits for our citizens and also for the animals. Any questions?
How do you capture the cats?
I'm gonna ask John Gary, who's our Superintendent of Animal Welfare, to come up and address specific questions.
Thank you, council. We use volunteers with traps to capture the cats, to spay and neuter them, and a lot of it's done by just residents of Oklahoma City that are wanting to help. And so, some of us are recruited volunteer base that we have, and then Central Oklahoma Humane Society has several volunteers as well.
Most, every cat colony has some sort of neighborhood supporters, it seems like, that kind of look after them and try to make sure they're fed.
Yes.
I bet mice hate this program. I'm just guessing. We're losing thousands of cats that wouldn't have been released otherwise. Well, the Animal Welfare Department's come so far, so please thank the Humane Society for us, and the, you know, the cultural shift we've had in the community about being responsible pet owners. It's all great, and I know our staff probably enjoys going to work a lot more today than they did 10 or 15 years ago. It's gotta be a real boost in morale.
Yes.
Thank you, guys.
So there aren't any city staff members who go out and trap cats?
Not that actually provides trapping, no. It's all done by volunteers. Bar officers will do some trapping if there's an instance where maybe a hoarding situation or we know a cat is, needs our help due to sick or injured or something like that.
Right. And, you know, those bar graphs that you showed, those were over an eight-year period when the, when they had the community cat program in effect, right?
Correct.
And when did we start our community cat program?
In 2012.
2012, so it's been about, it's been about five years. So it hasn't been as long, but yet we are still seeing a decrease in the intake, just not at the same rate as the other cities, right?
Correct.
Is that correct? Okay. Well, I have, you know, the main issue I have with it is that, is that for the people who are actually trapping the cats, that we're taking away their ability to have any sort of input, and taking into, just in consideration of that they are spending their time, their energy, and then, but we're gonna say that they don't have any say in whether or not that what happens to the cat, I think is a little bit unfair, because the volunteers do play a very vital role in this program, and so just, it's gonna, in my opinion, it'll hurt the morale of the volunteers. So, you know, I've written down four options that I, that I think would be better than what is written. The first one is just to keep the ordinance the same. The second one is to change the wording to basically take away the citizen complaining about the cats, because there's two different types of people in this that we're taking away. There's one that says that the citizen's complaining about the cats, don't have say anymore, but then there's another one that the people who are bringing in the cats. So you can leave in the people bringing in the cats, as they still have a say, but the ones who are just complaining about it, they don't have a say anymore. I would be fine with that. And then, then if neither one of those, if nobody agrees with me on those two, then number three would have some sort of a test period, maybe a 10-year, or a two-year sunset of it, and then it would, we would see if it actually does increase the rate of intake. And then the fourth one is just, at the very least, if it passes as it is, that we would have a report in one or two years to compare the numbers and see if it really is having the effect that we're saying it will have, so. Those are just my...
Items being introduced today, public hearing next week, so anybody watching that has views they want to share could show up then, and then the final hearing will be July 5th. If we wanted to make an amendment to some of the ideas you brought up, that'd be the appropriate time.
Okay, well, and I have, I've had more conversations about feral cats in the last three months than I ever thought that I would ever have, so that's why I'm sharing these thoughts at this point, so. And both sides make good points, and I feel like some of these might be a good way of compromising between the two sides, so.
All right. Thanks, staff, for putting all this together.
Thank you.
All right, we need a motion to introduce the ordinance today. I saw an arm go up. Did somebody want to speak on this today? Come on up. You know, I mean, the public hearing's next week, but you came all the way down here, and I hate to have you come back next week.
I have three yells, I'm gonna forget what I'm gonna say. A couple of things, and I am one of the trappers. I started with, I was recruited by the Oklahoma Humane Society 10 years ago. Was given a lot of promises at that time. Help with food, we were gonna be a part of a team. Help with food, buying traps for us, taking all the adoptable cats, plenty of volunteers. None of that happened. It happened for a short while. We're on our own. We have no volunteers. We're paying, we're buying our own food. We've had to get our own 501(c)(3)'s, and excuse me if I cry, to try to get some help. We're, I fell out of a tree and broke my hip three years ago. I'm not as strong as I used to be. I have arthritis in both shoulders. They're looking at arthroscopics, surgery, but my, Tom Takosh at McBride is my doctor. They've upped my arthritis medicine because we're in dumping season, and there's only two trappers at Oval Horsor, and we've gotta rescue those cats and get them off the street. We're tired. This ordinance passes, the only two trappers you have are leaving at Oval Horsor. The presidents?
I don't want to get too far into this, because, you know, I think it'd be appropriate for staff to rebut some of these arguments next week. Even if you can't come, something tells me some others will.
I will be here, but one more thing I would like to say. In response to, they respond to bad animal situations. A few years back, and I can get this in writing from the supervisor of, I can't think of it, but at Baptist Hospital, they had a mother cat that had kittens on the roof. It was August. It was 100 degrees. The mother cat could get down, the kittens couldn't. The buildings around reviewing those kittens. They could not get the shelter to respond. Somebody there, security, knew, somebody who knew me, I was called, I've trapped on the roof at Baptist Hospital twice, and trapped kittens, because they could not get the shelter to respond.
Well, I'm guessing the shelter couldn't go on private property. Would that be right? Would that be right?
Pardon?
Yeah.
I don't know.
Yeah. Well, thank you for doing that.
Yes.
And most likely saved those cats' lives.
And I've also lost all the dogs at Oval Horsor. Again, nobody else--
We'll see you next week.
Yes, sir, you will.
All right. Thanks for coming down.
I'll try to dress more appropriately.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Is there a motion then to receive the ordinance?
Yes.
Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. All right, item 9D is a public hearing regarding dilapidated structures. Is there anyone here hoping to speak on any item listed under 9D? All right, how about a motion? Is there a second? Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 9E is a public hearing regarding unsecured structures. Is there anyone here hoping to speak on any item listed under 9E? All right, how about a motion? Is there a second? Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 9F is a public hearing regarding abandoned buildings. Is there anyone here hoping to speak on any item listed under 9F? Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 9G is a public hearing regarding removal of property from the abandoned building list. Is there anyone here hoping to speak on any of these items? All right, we have a motion. Is there a second? Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 9H is a public hearing. Counsel will remember Doug Dollar gave us a presentation two weeks ago. This has to do with the annual appropriation of the fire sales tax expense. Is there anyone here hoping to speak on item 9H today?
No item.
All right, cast your votes. It passed unanimously. And item 9I is a similar item. This one's for police. Is there anyone here hoping to speak on item 9I?
No item.
All right, cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 9J was moved up and performed earlier. And then item 9K is a public hearing regarding the 2018 annual budget.
Mayor Cornette Doug Dollar is here this morning to give you a brief presentation on the budget. Obviously, we've seen it, this is the fifth time we've seen it over the last two months, so a lot of presentations on it.
Yeah, we just have a brief recap, kind of of what's in the budget for you this year. As we look at the total, we're at $1,377 million is the overall budget. Our general fund is down just a bit, a little under 1% at $404.5 million. Non-operating funds, $238.1 million, see a slight increase there. And then non-operating funds see a significant increase there at $734.8 million. And as we discussed, that's related to the MAPS III sales tax, again, building up that cash balance as it's beginning now to pay for those significant projects. One change we have from the proposed budget that you received in the booklet and that was presented at the beginning of May, and that's moving the marshal's office from municipal courts, or that function from municipal courts, eliminating those 11 positions and adding nine positions in police to handle court enforcement services. And so we'll see a shift in costs from the municipal courts to the police department. In the budget document that you have before you, that's on pages 20 and 21 in the attachment B that shows the new budgets for police and municipal courts. There's a slight difference in cost between providing those services in courts and in police, and that difference is reflected in our non-departmental total. So our bottom line general fund budget doesn't change, just some of the allocations there between departments to reflect that change. So with that, then our total positions are 4,642 for next fiscal year. That's a decrease of 18 from our current number of positions, and it's our second year in a row of reductions in positions. As we take a look at the revenue, when we look at the total budget, again, $1.377 billion, taxes are the largest piece of that. Of course, sales tax is our biggest source of revenue in total, or of the total, it's $411 million. And one of the things we did this year to break out, again, that significant MAPS III fund balance and put it as its own category at 27.9%, again, that's as they build up cash over the years, so we begin to pay for those projects. It's developed a significant fund balance that's now being used as these large projects begin to go under construction. When we turn to the general fund, again, taxes are the largest piece of the budget, 64.8%. Sales tax, again, the largest individual piece at 52.5% or $212 million. And I won't run through those other categories, but they're there on the chart. When we look at expenditures, again, personal services are our largest expense, our people, that's what it takes to provide service. But again, that MAPS III budget, significantly broke that out as its own category there on the chart. When we hone into the general fund, again, personal services become a huge piece of our budget, 73.4% because it takes people to provide service to our citizens. And then finally, when we look at it by service area, you can see within the general fund, public safety is 64.6% of the total, general government, 8.5%, public services, a little over 17%, and then culture and recreation at 9.6%. So as the city manager said, we've had several presentations by departments, opportunities for public input. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have here as we wrap up the budget process for FY '18.
All right. Doug, thanks. Do we need to vote on that?
Yes, we need a motion to adopt the verdict.
We're voting on item 9K. Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
Glad you're here. All right, item 9L is a public hearing today. This is in regard to the resolution that would allow the council and I to call for an election. And so the first thing we're going to do is discuss the general obligation bond issue. And so, just so everyone is aware, there will be no final vote today. That'll take place next week. But this has been advertised as an opportunity for people to come in and give us input, and council and I welcome your input. Because of the sheer number of people that have asked to speak, we'll ask you to keep your comments to three minutes. I will try to enforce that to the best I can. Following the bond issue presentation, then we will talk about the possibility of extending the MAPS sales tax, and there can be public hearing regarding those items. There might be some crossover, somebody might get mixed up and talk about the wrong one, and we'll deal with that as it goes. Any comments from council before we get started here this morning? Okay. All right, we have a couple of people that have signed up to speak on the bond issue. Zenefu Warrior, come on up. We will need your name and address for the record.
Sure. Zenefan Warrior Jr., and I reside at 5712 North Lottie Avenue, Oklahoma City. I would thank the mayor and also the city council members for this opportunity to talk about the various concerns we have here in our particular neighborhood. I was, I was really pleased that we had an opportunity, the citizens had an opportunity to fill out one of these neighborhood surveys, particular bond issues that we've had that were filled out. I don't recall that being available the last 10 years when we done the particular program we have with that. But our neighbors have filled this particular surveys out, and we were, some of the concerns we had, we were disappointed when I looked at the various projects concerning the drainage issues that affect our particular neighborhood. Our neighborhood is at the intersection of Northeast 50th and Kelly. Going north, it is east of Kelly Avenue, going toward the Oklahoma City Zoo they have through here. And we have our particular neighborhood, we have through there, we have the Deepwater Creek Basin that cuts through our neighborhood and has been causing some erosion problems over the number of years for the 30-plus years that we have various issues and been concerned with that. They've had some complaints or some concerns with that throughout the individual years with that. But all of the water that, a lot of the water that will drain from the northwest side of Oklahoma City ends up going in our particular neighborhood through that Deepwater Basin they have for that. And that wasn't, drainage wasn't anything that was addressed in Ward 7 last 10 years ago that we've had with this. And as I look through the individual projects listed, I don't see any issues of that drainage being addressed this time around. We've had that. As of last week, we did have some drainage engineers that came and visited and toured our particular neighborhood to look at particular houses that have issues that back up to the Deepwater Creek along North Stonewall and also North Lottie Avenue to look at the individual issues that would have with that. And I know they are in the process, just they're just a week ago today, as a matter of fact. And I know they are in the process of looking at the individual issue and going and talking to various types of departments that we have with that. I believe the engineer that was there with our particular department, his head of his department is Eric Weiner, that looked that particular area over that they have for that. So I just would hope that the council, as they are determining the final projects listed with that, that we can possibly have some relief for our issues we have in our particular neighborhood and maybe get some, some part of that $64 million that's been satisfied for this drainage with the bond.
All right. Thanks for coming down.
Thank you.
Kimberly Willis.
Good morning.
We'll need your name and address for the record.
Kimberly Willis, 6012 Northwest 30th. I'd actually like to speak on the general obligation bond and the sales tax issue.
Okay. But you still only have three minutes, but we're welcome to cross over.
I'll try to get through as fast as I can. It's my understanding that the sales tax and the bond, according to a press release, would invest $1.1 billion in the city. That would go towards streets, police, firefighters, and other basic needs, and includes an annual injection of $26 million for day-to-day operations. Three components, all of which will appear on the ballot separately. One is the permanent quarter cent sales tax. One is the temporary three-quarter cent sales tax that replaces MAPS III. And the general obligation bond, with total $967 million, and that follows the 2007 bond program. This uses property taxes to fund basic infrastructure needs. $491 million is dedicated to building and rebuilding streets, sidewalks, and bike lanes. $28 million for traffic control. $27 million for bridges. $138 million for new parks and improvements to parks. $62 million for drainage controls. $60 million for community development funding. $45 million for firefighting facilities. $31 million for police facilities, and another $86 million for additional projects. The 2007 bond was $835 million, and it included street resurfacing, widening, bridge repair and replacement, traffic flow improvements, drainage improvements, new and renovated libraries, police and fire facilities, new and improved parks, transit investments, and economic development. The MAPS III penny sales tax expires in December, and the bond proposal would permanently extend the quarter cent sales tax into the city's general fund. And it states that about two-thirds of the general fund goes to public safety. One of my questions is, how does that go into, if it's for the MAPS, for capital improvements, how does that go into the general fund as far as revenue?
Yeah, it's--
As opposed to the non-operating?
Well, it's, it's not in, you're talking about the quarter cent?
Yes.
The quarter cent goes into the general fund as proposed today.
And the three-quarter cent?
Would be similar to what you're, what you're used to with MAPS.
Okay.
It would be a temporary sales tax.
Right. And would that go into the non-operating fund?
That's going to the capital fund, yeah.
The capital investment fund.
To build things.
Right, for projects.
Right, not for salaries.
Right.
Right.
And so this three-quarter cent sales tax that's temporary is said to be for $126 million for street resurfacing, which is also what was mentioned in the sales tax issue.
That's right.
$18 million for streetscapes, $8 million for trails, $9 million for bicycle infrastructure.
You're running out of time.
Okay, I'll get there.
I'll let you finish if you'd like to have a summation.
Yeah. And $18 million for sidewalks. What I'd like to get at is that there's concern with our schools. What we have listed here on general obligation bonds is that those are paid for by ad valorem taxes. And something that was mentioned, so the bonds fund years of, this was on the Oklahoma City website, that the bond programs fund years of construction projects, and the voters approve the propositions, and then the investors buy the bonds and the city replaces them with property taxes over a period of 20 years. The five-year forecast stated that continued stability of the general fund is significantly contingent upon growth in tax revenues, sales tax in particular, and that projected growth of sales tax is at 3.27% annually from 2017 through 2022.
I'm going to have to ask you to wrap up.
Which essentially is a continued increase in sales tax. What I would propose with the continued increase of sales taxes that a lot of citizens are upset about is that we, the people, form a council that would be willing to meet with leadership of Oklahoma City to arrive at some solutions rather than continuing to incur continued sales tax increases, general obligation bonds, and incurring further debt for the city. As citizens, that's not a priority for us. I think many of us would like to see much more fiscal discipline.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Next.
Okay. Well, if that's it, that's all I have for L.
All right. So that's all for L, and then we'll move down to the, to the sales tax.
Yes.
I have to speak on this topic.
Come on up, Michael.
Was this about the GOP bond?
Yes.
Michael Washington, 2900 Northeast 18th Street, Oklahoma City, Oklahoma. Well, now, illustrious people, where's the real game here? Putting the money into the pockets of the wealthy downtown developers. Everybody knows Mike Washington's not going to sugarcoat anything. Probably one of the only ones who won, okay? Now, the GOP bond is a great deal if it's actually used for the public who really needs it. Y'all didn't hear me when I said that. Every day I come down here, or rather, every time you have a city council meeting, or pretty much, I miss every nine then, all I hear is talk about is sales tax here, that and the other, GOP bonds, okay, for schools are different than any of the other. And yet, for the most part, I never see where this money's actually going to the needed community of people, especially not in the school districts and things on the northeast side of Oklahoma City. So the GOP bond could be a great thing if it was actually used for the purpose of uplifting otherwise downtrodden and blighted communities like the one I live in. These GOP bonds, huh, it's a good name. I wonder what is it really the name for? I wonder what is it really the name for? Let's help the wealthy out? Yeah. Let's help the wealthy? This is not what we're talking about around here, y'all. You got one political activist, one human being, who's not gonna sit around and allow you to mimic or mark a farce, or actually create a farce, of actually looking out for the tax-paying dollar people. We know that this GOP bond is nothing but put the money into the wealthy individuals who have a personal sacred interest in downtown Oklahoma City. We're gonna talk about this tax, 1% sale tax as regard to the, giving it to police officers and things like that. I'm gonna love that, the topic, when that topic comes up. But once again, if we use this GOP bond, oh my God, I feel good about it. And matter of fact, I wanna be sitting on, matter of fact, that council, if it's possible, that board of directors regarding that, maybe we can get some real direction in that money being spent like it's supposed to be. Let me be a liaison, okay? Let me sit back and review the documentation to make sure that money's being spent like it's supposed to be. Now, at this particular moment, everybody, I know it's one of the problem with, that's where it's supposed to be, because you got somebody gonna speak his mind up here. Now, one last thing before I get out of here. I would like this council to create a special committee with me, Michael Washington on it, so that I can review and make the appropriate steps necessary regarding the funds that will be distributed in this regard. Thank you very much, and I will be back. Thank you for this opportunity, everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name is Bill Shepard. I live at 3025 Pine Ridge Road, right here in Oklahoma City. Thanks for this opportunity to speak. I'm with SoonerPoll.com. We are the state's only independent, nonpartisan polling firm. We were commissioned to do a poll over a variety of issues. One of those is the GO bonds, and I would like to present those today. The first one, we gave respondents a brief explanation of the general obligation bonds and some of the questions, services that these bonds would have been used for in the past. With this information, we found that 67% of voters said that they would support a general obligation bond on the ballot in the future, which I think bodes well for the bond election in September. Only 14% said that they would oppose it. We also asked about the economic development, which is one of the 14, I believe, or 11? 11? 11 different questions on the ballot. We gave them a brief history of the economic development bond that originated in 2007. That was the first time that it was added. After giving both supporters and opposition views of the bond, we asked voters if they would support this particular bond on the ballot. And with this information, 35% that they would support this bond, and 47% said they would oppose it. So while there was not a majority of opposition to the economic development as it's listed on the bond question, there was one in three that opposed that particular question. The last one to discuss here for the general obligations bond is we informed respondents that on top of the $500 million proposed in this bond, that there is still $150 million for street projects that's being carried over, and we asked that knowing this, 57% would, would be likely to support the bond, and 22% would be unlikely to support it. So even though there is a carryover of $150 million, adding on to another $500 million in this bond, there was very good support for that as well. And so that's all I have on the polling for these particular questions, and I'd like to speak on some of the others that meets with your agenda. Thank you.
All right. So is there anybody else that wanted to speak on the bond issue aspect of this?
Your Honor.
Yes, Dave.
Just make a comment. I believe it's Mr. Warrior who made the comment about soliciting input and surveys from our citizens. I'd like to take that a step further and just recommend that, as we did this past year in anticipation of the GO bond, we had community meetings throughout all of the wards, and to continue that process, just to give the citizens an update on the progress of those expenditures over the life of the bonds, to try to have it once a year. Again, just to try to keep them as informed as possible and continue to provide opportunities for their input.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. We will move on then to item N. This is the sales tax extension. All right. Looks like we have some people here from the Chamber of Commerce. Rhonda Hooper. Good morning.
Good morning. I'm Rhonda Hooper, 1800 Mulhall and Drive, and I'm here in my capacity as the Chair of the Greater Oklahoma City Chamber, and I'm accompanied by vice chairs and executive committee members, and a couple have some remarks. But we respect, understand, and truly appreciate all the needs and demands that are, you're trying to fulfill with these proposals. Our Board of Directors met last week in a very lengthy and had in-depth discussion about the needs as well as the proposals. You know, we truly appreciate all the hard work the council has put in to prioritize all of those needs in light of the $1.8 billion in potential funding. You know, but the chamber, we are in full support of the, of the items in the bond proposition. We also understand in your citizen survey that you had mentioned that road conditions were at the top of the list. And trust me, in our conversations with existing businesses, roads are a primary concern. If you're having to zigzag within your lane to avoid damaging your wheels in a pothole, it's very frustrating. And, you know, we've worked together very hard as a community over the past 25 years to create what we see as one of America's finest cities. So bottom line, just like you, we love to tout our accolades and the top rankings that our city has, like the best places to start a business, or the best city for millennials. But one of those rankings that we're not very proud of in that all of America's cities, Oklahoma City is one of the 10 worst pothole cities. In fact, the research says that 47% of our roads are in poor condition. We want to get off that list, and we want to be able to not zigzag and waste tire tread anymore and be able to get to our to-and-from work without any more hassle. Thank you.
Thanks, Rhonda. Carl Edwards?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I'd like to thank each of you for all the efforts that you have. I know it takes a huge amount of your time, and I really appreciate the fact that we have such a great city council. We urge the council to consider an alternative proposal regarding the sales tax, increasing the temporary tax to a full penny. We believe the MAPS penny should be kept whole while, which would give the city the ability to address more street resurfacing needs now and to continue to use this portion of the sales tax to create transformational change in our city. We also hear and understand the citizens' demand for more police officers. We understand the council's concerns about declining sales tax revenue, and the real need of our city has to address this issue. We agree that the permanent tax increase for public safety and operations is the right thing to do and should also be included on the ballot. Public safety is a primary function of our city, government, and making sure we can grow the resources to meet the demand is vital and cannot be ignored. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Carl. Judy Hatfield?
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. Once again, I'm Judy Hatfield, 131 D.A. McGee, and I'm here in my capacity as Executive Committee of the Oklahoma City Chamber. We want to again reiterate our support for what you are diligently working on to accomplish this election. Our citizens understand what it takes to build this great city, and they're willing to invest when they can see that we can make a positive difference with that investment. Our chamber has been a strong partner of the city for many years, and we continue to plan to strengthen that relationship in the future. We're ready to stand behind these proposals and run an effective campaign to see their passage. We also look forward to working with other community groups to share the benefits of this program across the entire city. We believe we all can win at the ballot box with this proposal. Thank you very much for hearing our concerns and our proposal.
Thanks, Judy.
Good morning, and thank you for this opportunity.
Mike, we'll need your name and address.
Mike Ray, live at 7929 Maze Lane, Oklahoma City, 73162. My wife and I have supported every MAPS bond issue and endorsed most of the street and bridge projects in the latest proposed bond issue. But I have a couple of reservations and one question. Why does the city want to spend $1,320,000 on Hefner Road between Rockwell and MacArthur, and $1,320,000 on Hefner Road between Council and Rockwell? That two-mile stretch of Hefner is in rather good condition already. I drive it frequently. But my primary concern is the plan to spend $6,375,000 to upgrade residential streets in the area that's bounded by Rockwell, Council, 122nd Street, and Hefner Road. That area is north of my housing addition, North Haven. North Haven is bounded by Hefner Road on the north, Mantle Court on the east, Northwest 101st Street on the south, Council Road on the west. As I said, I live at 7929 Maze Lane. When we moved to Oklahoma City 32 years ago, in 1985, Maze Lane did not even appear on the latest municipal street map. Harvest Hills off of Council Road to the west of North Haven was the only development in our vicinity. North of Hefner Road, as far as we could see, was open fields. There was nothing north of Hefner, including the area where the city now proposes to spend $6.3 million to upgrade streets in a residential addition that was built after hours was. The city finally came out two or three weeks ago and patched a few potholes in the asphalt pavement, but the ruts are still there, the alligator cracking is still there, the spalling is still there. Just take the entrance into North Haven at 102nd Street, off of Council Road, and continue driving east, and you'll understand exactly what I'm talking about. I do not understand why a residential area that was built after mine was is in line to get $6 million worth of attention while the streets in my residential addition get nothing more than minimal asphalt paving. Thank you for your time.
Actually, your neighborhood is about to be done. It was a 2007, it was on the 2007 bond list, and so it's actually under contract now to be repaved.
Any idea when? Because nobody's notified us.
Do you remember the, the, I know that the bids have been sent out to, to, for, for people to...
Take your word for it.
To be reconstructed.
Mr. Ray, we'd be happy to get...
But yeah, it is a...
We'd be happy to have the public works director get back with you and get the timeframe for that.
Sounds great. Thank you.
You bet.
Good morning. My name is Hal McKnight. My address, excuse me, 6509 Lennox Avenue, and I'd like to talk briefly about our trail system here in Oklahoma City. First, would like to thank Mayor Cornett, the City Council, present and past members, the Oklahoma City Trail Advisory Committee, MAPS III Citizens Advisory Board, and the Parks and Recreation Department for all the hard work and dedication that's been put in to building a wonderful trail system in our city. We still have a few needs that are still out there. First would be, we need to connect all the trails. We have a large city, and we have trails in all quadrants, but we need to have connectivity. I think we'll recognize the greatest benefits of our trail systems once we connect everything. It just makes good sense. Second, we need signage. We have done a feasibility study and have a master plan for wayfinding and signage for our trails, but we lack funding to construct signage that would be including trail etiquette for trail user's safety and wayfinding, which would give you directions, would let you know where you are, and also hopefully at some point we can do amenities. But those two things seem to be top of the list to get us to the point where we've all dreamed and hoped we could be. The trails certainly stand for quality of life. They represent health and wellness, and we have a lot of momentum from the trails that we have built. We still have a couple of MAPS, three trails. One is under construction, which is the Will Rogers Trail that connects Lake Hefner to the river, and that, that's already started, and that is an important link. We think we'll have a lot of recreation and commuting trail use on that. And then the final trail of MAPS III will be a trail that will be around Draper Lake, which will go into some beautiful areas that surround that. We've got a lot of forward momentum. We really appreciate the help that has been there by the, the City Council and these committees. We really hope this committee will, this, this City Council will continue to help with, with future funding and the general obligation bond to keep this momentum going and, and let us, let us continue to have a wonderful trail system.
All right. Thanks, Hal.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
T. Sherri Dickerson, 1813 Harden Drive, Oklahoma City, Oklahoma, 73111. I actually am wanting to speak towards the sale tax.
That's fine.
Is that okay? All right. Some of my concerns simply are the fact that Oklahoma City and the council has the opportunity now to show that we're actually wanting to be supportive of education, our schools, and our teachers. We've seen in the Oklahoma Legislature that they have wanted to introduce legislation that had no teeth. So we're asking and hoping that you all are going to support something that reiterates to our entire educational society that we do care, that we don't want them to have to consider working multiple jobs when they should be able to focus on providing quality education for our students, for our children. I am a parent of a student within the Oklahoma City School District, and I have had to make choices and try to decide whether or not I wanted to provide an, an alternate form of education, simply because it's not conducive when you have educators who are stressed about providing for their own families. It doesn't make any sense, and it doesn't reflect well on what we consider the great state of Oklahoma. Oklahoma City has the opportunity to now set ourselves apart and do something correct that is going to be reflective of who we can be. Passing the tax would simply say that we're now going to have funds available to where we can actually say these types of things that should be priority in Oklahoma City and statewide are actually the priority. We need to stop giving lip service and supporting other things that can find other ways of being supported and focus on what is truly important. What does it say to our students, to our children, when we don't advocate for them? What does it say when we're not willing to make, have the difficult conversations and discussions with those in power who can make those types of changes? So I'm asking you to really consider what's important to you today. Do you really mean it when you say you want the city of Oklahoma City to be great, that we are great? Are we going to continue to slap the faces of teachers and basically just destroy dreams of many of our young people simply because they don't even have books in a classroom? Can we find a way that we're also not worried about our educators trying to figure out, well, do I eat? Or do I overwhelm myself with trying to find alternate employment? This is why we're losing those amazing people. Let's get it right, Oklahoma City. Let's get it right, council, and let's go ahead and show our educators, our students, and our communities that we really do care. SOS. This is a mayday call. Save our state.
Vanessa? Oh, sorry.
Good morning, Mayor, and members of the council. My name is Vanessa Gerst. I am in Ward Eight. My address is 8041 Brookshire Drive in Oklahoma City, Oklahoma, 73162. I am an educator of 18 years, with my first and my sixth, this past six years being here in the state of Oklahoma. Between those years, I taught around the United States as a military spouse. My husband is now also a teacher after separating from the military. Being a dual-income teacher family isn't easy. We both take on extra duties to help pay our bills. I also have two other part-time jobs so that our children can partake in activities that enrich their lives, such as Boy Scouts and sports. Our Oklahoma legislators were unable to put anything in place to show support of our Oklahoma teachers and to work to, to slow the loss of quality teachers to other states or to other kinds of professions. Please be our knights in shining armor. Include teachers and support staff as a modification to the MAPS proposal. We need your support. Having a beautiful city is definitely a perk, but without quality educators to teach our children of Oklahoma, it won't matter. It is imperative that the children of Oklahoma be a priority and their teachers be given needed support. Thank you.
Thanks, Ms.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, council. My name is Reverend Jesse Jackson, Jr. I'm the pastor of the East Sixth Street Christian Church located at 1139 Northeast Sixth Street here in Oklahoma City. I've served that congregation for now 21 years. I'm also a teacher with Oklahoma City Public Schools, but my claim to fame is that I was once the Little League... once the Little League baseball coach for Council McPeters.
Yeah. Dang.
That is true.
You have all the time you need to expand on.
Mr. Mayor and Council, I've come here to, first of all, congratulate you and appeal to you for the vision that you all and the leadership of this city has shown for the last two decades. Oklahoma City has far outpaced many cities, not only its size, but greater in its vision and what it has done economic, economic development-wise and other things. But we have an opportunity now, I think, to really step up as a city and do some things that our state legislature just has not had the vision or the guts or the will to do. And that is to care for the most vulnerable among us. You know, and as a pastor, you know, in the Old Testament, the monarchs, the rulers were judged on how they cared for the least of these among us. And this is an opportunity to step up and really show. Oklahoma City has led the way, not only in this state, not only in this region, but across this nation in so many ways. Oklahoma City can show the way, being innovative and saving schools. This is not just happening in Oklahoma. This is happening across the United States right now. One of the subjects that I teach is Oklahoma history. I have three Oklahoma history books, three. It makes teaching about our great state extremely difficult. I have to be extremely creative. Now, I've done it. I've done it, but it would be so much easier if I had a full set of books. It'd be so much easier if, when something broke, I could actually get it replaced. Had a desk broke last year, young man, nobody wanted to sit in the desk. Everybody rushed to get to the room because nobody wanted to sit in a broken desk. That's the world that we living in right now. And so I'm appealing to you, Mr. Mayor, I'm appealing to the council, when we consider what we're doing, and everything is important. It's no doubt, everything is important. But how we treat our educational system right here would show incoming businesses, it would show those that are here, that Oklahoma City actually cares about its citizens. And we know you care, but it would show that we're being just as innovative in this way as we are in every other way. Thank you.
Thank you. Judy Mullen-Hopper?
My name's Judy Mullen-Hopper.
Thank you.
Address is 11912 Sawgrass Road, and I live in Ward Eight. Thank you for what the Reverend just said, and I could just say ditto, but I'm going to add my little two cents. I represent public education, as you can see from my T-shirt. I knocked many doors last year trying to get into office so that I could help the teachers and our children from the legislative standpoint. That didn't happen. And as much as I would like to think in the future they are going to step up to the plate and do something for us, right now we have an opportunity to help fix it here in our Oklahoma City limits. That doesn't just include Oklahoma City Public Schools. That includes Putnam City Schools. That includes Bethany Schools. That includes a lot of the schools that you all represent. We are losing teachers in an unbelievable exodus. My Harvest Hills that I taught at for all those 35 years, we have 10 new teachers. That's a third of the staff. What's going to happen when we have no one there to teach these young newbies how to teach our poor children how to read and write and just be part of society? You know, I appreciate so much, so much, what our City Council has done over the years in improving the capital improvements in our city, all the things that MAPS has done. It's a wonderful thing. If we do not help our children, we've done nothing. And this is the core of our city. They're the ones that are going to grow up, and we want them to live here. We want them to be in a business that the business owners want their kids to go to a public school. So I plead with you today. And we have a great following of teachers throughout our state. Right now, we have a Facebook group that consists of 30,000 people. That's all over the state, not just Oklahoma City limits. But I know what social media can do. When I ran for office in a very conservative area, I still won 15,500 votes. So I know we have a lot of people behind us. So remember what that means when we go to vote, because we want just a quarter percent to go for education. We're not asking for all of it, certainly, certainly not for what's being given to our public safety individuals, but we do expect to have something to keep our teachers here, here in Oklahoma City. We don't want them to go to Texas any longer. So I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Mark Nelson?
Thank you, Mayor. Mark Nelson, 1624 South Agnew here, representing the 1,000, 1,500-plus members of the Oklahoma City Fraternal Order of Police. And I'm here to address you and Mayor, but briefly, I just want to let the educators that are in the audience know that we support what you do for our city and for our state and appreciate you very much. I want to say thanks also to each one of you. As I was sitting here, I was looking and thinking of different instances where you have shown support for public safety. And for three minutes' sake of time, I won't go through each of those, but want to say thank you for your support for public safety. The issues that are before you and before the citizens of Oklahoma City are no doubt very difficult and are constantly moving. You trying to balance those and address them are, I don't think too many people envy your position. The challenge of addressing these needs, it seems to be a consistent hurdle, and it's a constant hurdle, one that you do well at clearing regularly. The council's record of supporting more police officers, more public safety, more fire in this city is there. Unfortunately, the revenue, sales tax revenue has been in decline the last couple of years and has prevented the addition of those spots that are so needed. With the 200,000 population growth, the 200,000 people that this city has grown in the last 20 years, we have literally a handful, within a handful, the same number of officers answering 911 calls. It's a city the size of Edmund and Norman essentially combined without a police department. But future needs are what are before us. We can't do anything about the past. We have to address the future. And the facts are this, that it takes over eight and a half minutes, or right at eight and a half minutes on average, to respond to Priority One calls. Rapes, forcible rapes are up 20% since 2011. Murders are up 60% since 2011. Last night, in an hour and a half timeframe, on the east side, there's an ADW, a drive-by where a bullet entered the home, and within 90 minutes, a victim of our city on the south side had her home burglarized and she was raped. I'm happy to report that our officers arrested the suspect, and we'll see what happens in the justice system, but we don't have enough officers. You all have recognized this. The proposal to address this with 129 officers is extremely appreciated. Here to speak in favor of it, in support of it. And like teachers, the citizens have shown great support for public safety in both this state and specifically this city. What they haven't shown is a stomach to pay more than the current 4.5% that the state charges and the 8375 that the city has. And as you look forward to addressing these needs of public safety, the proposals and the resolutions that council and mayor that you have spoken of, we support, we appreciate, and think that it gives the citizens a fair opportunity to address the public safety needs of this city going forward. Thank you very much.
Can I make a quick clarification on that? The city's share is an 8.375. That's a total share, including the state's 4.5. Just wanted to be clear on that.
Brooke Fonzie?
Hi. I'm Brooke Fonzie, 7324 Northwest 111th Terrace. I think I'm in Ward Eight also. I'm a teacher in Putnam City Schools and here to speak about the penny sales tax and the quarter percent to education. MAPS has been brilliant. It has been amazing for our city. I feel like our state, we've given them ample opportunity to step it up, to do what they need to do to fund education and public safety and all of the core services. I've worked as the legislative and advocacy chair for Putnam City Schools for the last five years. I've spent countless days and hours at the Capitol. I use my personal days every year to be at the Capitol on key days when we need educators to be there. I worked tirelessly last summer on two campaigns to try and replace two, a senator and a state rep who were not advocates of public education. Didn't win those two elections, but I'm not giving up. This proposal honestly I think is brilliant. I wish I would have thought of it. We've tried everything at the state level to get funding. They have dropped the ball. They are not looking at new sources of revenue. They keep feeding us pennies and giving us little bits here and there. I understand this isn't a fix for the whole state, but this money is huge for Oklahoma City. And as you all know, other cities will follow suit. Tulsa's already on board with a similar type of plan, and this could make a difference. I hate potholes as much as the rest of the state, but this quarter percent could make a big difference. I feel like this is your chance as a city to keep leading the way. We led the way across the state with parks and with MAPS and with everything else that we've done. So I'd love to see our city take the lead on this. Thank you.
Harriet Porter?
I live at 624 Northwest 19th Street in Oklahoma City. I didn't plan to talk today, so I don't have prepared remarks. But as a retired pediatrician, I really see the effects of our school district difficulties. And I agree with all the comments about how difficult it's been with the state. I was out there at the Capitol Building, too. The point I would like to bring up has to do with the things you all have been able to do with MAPS to try to build this city. But I see from the residents that I trained at the University Medical Center, and I'm sure it's true for the young lawyers training at OCU and all of the other trainees, professional trainees, they are not going to want to come to Oklahoma City if their kids can't get a decent education, and they're not going to be able to afford private schools. So it's a reality that we're not going to get the top people in all of the professions here. And the young people who've finished their training and are looking for a place to stay, the first thing they look at is education for their kids. So I would strongly support this idea of diverting a quarter percent of this tax increase to going to public schools.
Okay. Thanks, Harriet. Paula Lewis?
Mayor and council, thank you for this opportunity to speak. I am here to speak to education and the funding crisis that the legislature has put us in. Last year, we started with $3,150 per people funding from the state. That's half of the national average. Because of revenue failures in the spring, we ended at 2950. We were held, quote, harmless in this last budget that came through. However, that did not fund textbooks, and that does not account for the projected revenue failures in the spring. So we are held harmless at 2950 per student funding. And if we go into revenue failures in the spring, we'd be down probably another $150 per kid. Roughly about $12 a day is what we're being funded per child, and that's why we have the lowest-paid teachers, like 48th, 49th of teacher pay. It is a last-ditch effort, and it's a plea to give Oklahoma City Public Schools a chance to succeed. That quarter cent equals about $25 million per year. That's not even, that's $5 million short of the $30 million that we cut last year. But what that does is that stops the bleeding, and it allows us to get class sizes smaller. It allows us to give stipends, or bonuses as you will, to all teachers and support staff, non-administrative would be included in that. That gives people who are working for us, they say that the city that they pay taxes to believes in them, that they want them to stay here. They want them to continue to build small businesses and to support bonds and support MAPS and in the future. It is a last-ditch effort, but I really do plead. I think this could be a strong, strong message for Oklahoma that we are going to educate our kids, that this city will be educated, that we will do what we say we're going to do. And these parks that we build and these streets that we make better, you know, if we improve a street that goes by a school that we have to close because funding continues to go down, then we really need the street. And that's what I would say. So I really do please consider this. And if you have any questions, I would love to meet with any of you on that. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Paula. Lori Walkie?
Thank you, Mayor and council. I am Reverend Lori Walkie, and by the grace of God, I live in Ward Two, 5219 North Miller Place, 73112. This morning, I respectfully request that the council reallocate the proceeds of the penny sales tax so that a portion goes to improving schools in Oklahoma City. Actually, this is not a respectful request. It is a desperate, anxiety-ridden, panic-filled plea for help. Help that only you can give. The schools in Oklahoma City are in trouble. You know all about it. You know that last year's State Question 779 that would have raised teacher pay had fatal flaws. You know that the state legislature failed to keep its promise to increase funding to education. The school bus drivers, special education teachers, school support staff, and classroom teachers in my congregation and in this room are hanging on by a thread. So we're here this morning because you can fix this, at least for the teachers in Oklahoma City. The council can set an example for the rest of the state. The condition of our teachers, staff, students, and schools is just as vital to our city as its streets. Our roads may be in bad shape, but our schools are worse. Education is infrastructure. Education is infrastructure. If you do this, emergency services and roads will still get funds, and our teachers will know they are valued. So much winning, right? So much winning there. I would love to be able to call the seven of you here, the magnificent seven, along with our magnificent mayor. So please, please consider rewriting the penny sales tax so that our teachers and our students get some of those funds. Thank you.
Thanks, Lori. John Womastak?
John Womastak. I'm at 4319 Northwest 59th Street. Thank you, Mayor, and distinguished council members. You know, every time you go out and you sell this city to people, and we all do this, we say, "We love our town. We love this place. It's got a great quality of life. It's got a low cost of living." How do we get that great cost of living? With a steady supply of less-educated workers. And that's no disrespect to them, but the less educated people work for less money. How does this happen? When the majority of the white population abandoned Oklahoma City public schools during integration, minority families and children became the majority students. The white families, their money and influence fled to white flight communities surrounding Oklahoma City. Edmund, Yukon, Moore, districts like Putnam City, even private schools saw their enrollment soar. And the legacy is without the power and the support from those people that ran away from integration. Our school system is demoralized, weakened, and underfunded, and we need to do something about it. You know, OU President... You know, OU President Boren took his shot at it. It failed. Some of you worked publicly against it, some privately, but you wanted to keep the penny sales tax. Legislature, we know they failed. They're guilty of malpractice out there. So here we are. We've got maps, and maps has been outstanding for this city. You know, a few years ago, we had Maps for Kids, and that was fantastic. Did a great job for construction trades, but it didn't do anything for teachers. It didn't do anything for what is so vital, that spark, that imagination that creates young minds that want to make a better life for themselves. Our teachers are demoralized. They're underpaid. They're doing the best they can with what they have, and they don't have support from a community. And it's no, we need good roads, but I think we can have a piece of this maps for actual kids, for the teachers that teach them today, the paper. I don't think it's a coincidence, we learned that the district gave pay raises to the teachers and principals, and I guess maybe that was supposed to take some of the heat away from people wanting to talk about education today. Read it. It says that the educators that perhaps need some of the money the most, the ones that are just starting, that need to be inspired and not leave the teaching ranks, their raise equals $6 a week. That's what this says. I would just say, you know, we've got teachers leaving here for Texas and $10,000 raises. We read about that, and I guess we're okay with that. In closing, I would just say, you know, we've got streetcars that are getting ready to come online, and the price of one streetcar, one streetcar, could give every teacher in Oklahoma City a couple thousand-dollar raise. Right? Right? And I just want to say, why are we okay with neglecting our children and putting money into streets and concrete? Thank you, sir.
Good morning. My name is Nick Singer. I live at 5113 North Lynn Avenue. I am a parent of a young child living in the Oklahoma State School District. I also ran for a school board seat recently, so I've had the privilege of knocking on many thousands of doors and hearing the concerns of voters directly. Also, in, over the course of the past year, I had the honor to work with a wide-ranging coalition on State Question 779, which, you know, while obviously the voters did not end up supporting it, you know, really did spur the conversation for why we might be in need of a teacher pay raise in the state of Oklahoma. You know, I find it interesting, I didn't know, coming into this, that the chamber was going to do this presentation asking for a whole penny for roads. But prior to that, you know, they spent a million dollars with allies like municipal league and some of the large oil and gas companies in the state to sink 779 and say, you know, Oklahoma deserves better. We need a better plan. So what did we get? You know, the legislative session just ended. I got to spend a lot of time at the Capitol, unfortunately, and that didn't work. And there was no plan ever really advocated from, you know, these fine folks and the ideas that they're here today asking for. I didn't really see that up at the legislature this session. So now we're here, apparently looking at a total redo on maps, chamber's asking for a whole penny, you know, many education allies are asking for a quarter cent. If we're at this point, like, let's have that conversation. Let's really see what, let's have some political imagination. I mean, I get it, the roads are bad in Oklahoma, no question, but the schools are worse. And as a young parent, I'd rather dodge a couple potholes than scramble constantly to educate my child. So just to put some facts and figures to it, I ran some of the numbers on using the Maps for Kids splits from 2009 on what a quarter cent, $25 million, would look like. Oklahoma City would get about $17.5 million. There's 2,352 full-time equivalent teachers and about 2,800, almost 2,900 support staff. If you were to give them a temporary stipend two years, you'd be looking at approximately a $1,700 raise. That's not insignificant. It's less than what, you know, a lot of the proposals out there are, but it's something, and for support workers, it would be tremendous. For some of the larger districts around, I mean, you know, Moore would get 1.6 million. Putnam City would get 2 million. So, I mean, this is real money, and if we're, you know, now talking about, you know, if the best idea is to come up is to keep the penny whole, you know, we just saw polling, and I know from knocking doors and from polling on 779, you know, public education ranks the absolute highest. Like, if we want something that's going to pass with voters, let's put some education funding in it. I think it looks like I might be running out of time, so I'd ask that everyone have some courage, you know, really, let's, if we're not in agreement on what this should look like, let's really sit down, put our heads together, and come up with something better. Thank you.
Thanks, Nick.
Thanks, David Glover, 5434 Brookhaven Place. I don't have as much to say as just a few questions, and I'm just going to read them out. What's more important, people or things? Could you make a difference today if you changed your mind on this? Can we rely on the state to fix this and fund education properly? Did you consider education as part of this or not, or did you reject it? And if you did, please give us your reasons. Is education, was it better off during Maps for Kids when we gave one cent for that time period? What do you think companies think of Oklahoma and Oklahoma City when they hear that we're number one in education funding cuts? What do you think of all these cuts, and what is your solution to try to solve it? Is it going to be to wait for the next person to do it because five people here could make a difference? What do you think that teachers and students and parents think, and what do you think they think is possible? What would you say about Oklahoma City if we stepped up as a city in Oklahoma City and for the ability to make a difference? If you were a rural legislator, what do you think if Oklahoma City started doing this? What would you want to be as a rural legislator to get the legislature to do out at the state Capitol when students and, I mean, teachers start maybe getting taken from the rural areas? My guess is this might be the catalyst to get something done out there, since it's only for a short time. Do citizens know that $50 million a year for the next two and a half years is going to go to streets? Do they know that tens of millions every year is already placed with potholes in the city budget? Do they know that $500 million is about to be spent on the bond for streets? It's not about pupils or potholes. It could be pupils and potholes. The question is, is, are students in education worth half as much as what you think streets are for the next two and a half years? Will you make a difference today? Can you make a difference today? And will you make a difference? Thank you.
Thanks, David. Bill Sheppard.
Okay, so the continuation of this, I wanted to just point out that, and I will take any questions about our methodology if you have any, but as far as a Sooner Poll is concerned, we have the highest level of transparency of any pollster in the state. We also are among one of the few national pollsters that provides this kind of transparency. You can find all of this on SoonerPoll.com. We use a tri-frame methodology. It is one of the most scientifically sound methodologies to date, and as people begin to find other places in which to make sure that we do not leave anyone out of our population when we're polling, we're also not only using cell phones, but also an online panel. To speak on the three-quarter cent, the maps continuations, in this question, we gave the voters some background and history of the maps program. We then asked if they would overall support or oppose a continuation of maps. 55% of voters said that they would support a continuation of maps. 33% said that they would oppose it, which continues to show that maps is very popular in the city of Oklahoma City, without a doubt. When we talk about allocation of maps revenues, we asked, now we asked the voters to play the role of mayor, is what we did. We asked them to tell us what services they would choose to allocate the maps revenues to and what percentages they would give to each of these services. As you can see, very popular is street maintenance as opposed to street construction, and that should be drawn a distinction today for those. Street maintenance is filling potholes. Street construction, which is much more costly, is the repaving or creation of new streets. And so I think for those that are paying attention, they should make sure that they understand that street construction does not mean that potholes all over the city will be filled. When you take a look at this, police and fire is very popular as well, but then we also added what we call the Save Oklahoma Public Schools as a proposal. And not only is it in the top three of the priorities for those that wanted to allocate money towards our schools, but it ended up being, when we asked them, how much would they allocate of the maps towards it, 32.7%. That was the largest percentage of any of the other services that we asked. We did ask about spending on street parks. There was about, just about half that would support some of the revenues going towards parks. We also introduced the idea that Oklahoma City, in comparison to your typical Midwestern city, spends 28% less, or 20% overall, which is less than what other cities of our side spend, and there was a good, almost a majority that would be slightly more interested in voting for it if it included city parks. Then informed the voters that Oklahoma City is the largest city with no bus transportation on Sundays and very little in the evenings. Knowing this, 50% said that they would likely support spending a portion of the maps tax on public transportation. And so, again, these are other options that the city council and the mayor should consider. When we talk about street maintenance, and I mentioned this versus street construction, you can see that the largest percentage, 73%, said that they wanted money spent on both, not necessarily just on new street construction, but when the voters understand that potholes are filled in street maintenance and street construction is something different, they see that both of those items need to have an equal share. And then I have some, can I go real quickly on some of these?
You're well over. Why don't you just sum it up? Tell us the takeaway. What's the takeaway?
Okay. This is the Save Oklahoma City Public Schools proposal that we introduced, and you can see that. And I will point out, let's go ahead and go to one more slide, to methods of funding. And again, all this can be found on SoonerPoll.com at a later date, but go to one more. And if we take a look at the different ways that the city could fund this, sales tax was 18%. Income tax, an increase, replacing the income tax from 5 to 5.25% that the state has cut, was also popular. And then a corporate income tax was also unpopular. So typically, when citizens are adverse to taxation, when they see our schools in the condition that they are in, they are willing to then dedicate taxing themselves in which to fix that problem. And so I'll, I've got some more that we can talk about.
Bill, if you go back one, just one.
Yes.
One more. So this looks at the three, you're talking about a quarter cent sales tax, a quarter percent income tax, quarter percent corporate income tax. So basically, all three of these would have roughly 60% plus support. Is that correct?
That is correct, meaning that when we threw all three at them, they had an overwhelming majority, 60% is pretty high. Keep in mind that this poll was, 61% of the sample was Republicans. 71% was over the age of 65, which is what you find in a special election in September. So this polling was geared specifically for a September election. And that, so what does that say? That says the Republicans, who are typically conservative in our communities, half of them wanted to increase taxes of some sort in which to pay for schools in their communities. It also says that our elderly folks, those over the age of 65 who may not have kids in schools, also are willing to say the schools have a huge benefit or a huge impact on the vitality of our city and our communities, and they also are widely in support of using these, one of these measures in which to provide funding for schools.
All right. Thanks, Bill.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone. My name is Jessica Thompson. I live at 1414 Northwest 14th Street in Oklahoma City, Ward 2. I am here with Henry. He's two months old. And I wanted to mention that we know that Canadian County is the fastest-growing county in the state of Oklahoma. And I'm a Realtor, and I see and hear from buyers, friends, and family that they're choosing to move out of Oklahoma City. They're choosing Yukon, Mustang, Piedmont, Deer Creek, all those places. And I chair my community advisory board for Eugene Field Elementary, which is in Ward 2. Ward 2, it's our neighborhood school. And I don't have kids that go there yet. I got involved because even, I hope to send them there in two years, but in two years, I might be looking at maybe not sending them there, maybe moving, being one of those people that do move to Yukon or Mustang because the lack of funding for our schools. I've tried my hardest to reach out to the community for support, which we have gotten, which has been awesome. But we can only do so much, and so I'm asking that we allocate, that's part of the city sales tax revenue, to our schools. I think that we could give it a shot. It's for a short period of time, see what the results are, and if we, if city council wants to approve it in a few years again, then we could do it again. If they decide that it wasn't worth their while, then they could say, we could say no. But I just wanted to stand here and let you know that I want the same opportunities for my kids as I had when I went to Putnam City Schools. Currently, I don't feel that way with Oklahoma City schools, and I'd like to see that change. So I also wanted to say that I support our police and fire, and that I would like to see those funds go to them too. So, thank you for your time.
All right. Thanks, Jessica. Michael Washington.
Oh, my God, I thought I was going to get caught. Let me put this down. All right, everybody, I've heard some great things today, but then I'm still, still a little bit upset about what I've been here. Let me turn this, I'm a little bit tall here. All right, this gentleman here, I don't know your name, sir, as well as you on the end. I greatly am for the security of every citizen. However, I am not for a police agency outside of a respectable police agency called Oklahoma City Police Department, which is the fraternal order of police coming in and personally putting their side-winded personal interests on how the police department is to be run. I'm told that this council has already approved somewhat of $100 million for this group. Well, I'll tell you one thing about it. I don't appreciate that this gentleman's group of people, because of the turn for all the police, coming into the African-American community and riding down on a citizen who they stopped with three or four police cars around as if to mark all of us as being cruel, unusual, and criminal. Michael Washington has himself been a part of that flagrant disregard for my citizens' right. And you want to know why that's going on? Because African-American community is seen as low-class, second-class society of people. We don't even have a profound restaurant on that side of town. Y'all talking to Michael Washington now. This fraternal order of police is all designed so that more officers can be on the northeast side and to perpetrate and basically disrupt the African-American youth exposed in our community as well as old myself. I'm 60 years old, ain't even I get disrupted, disrespected. But you want to know what? Michael Washington don't mind it, because Michael Washington will see the police and wave at them every day. I'm not a repo. I'm not a robber. I don't do drugs. I don't do any kind of things that's harmful. Why? That's why I'm not in jail. Ain't that right? I don't fear what these gentlemen can do to me, but what I do fear is what the all-creator of God can do to me for not doing my job to speak for people otherwise who would not have a voice today. I don't believe that money should be geared toward these people because the chief of police can't do his job when you got John George and the fraternal order of police coming and telling what he can and cannot do. Again, one of us today is going to tell the truth. Again, one of us today is going to tell the truth and shame the devil this evening. I'd like to say again that that money should be spent, as these great illustrious people have been saying today, on the education of our kids. Education is the backbone of a prosperous and thriving society. Hello, education. Y'all have been educated, haven't you? Just think about this force of denying education for our upcoming kids, upcoming mayor, scientists, and philosophers today. Just think about them as yourselves. Let's reverse roles here a minute. Uh-oh, Mayor, I'm sitting in your seat today. Mayor, Michael, Mick Cornet, I'm going to look at and do some education for you. Yes, I will. I'm going to, City Jim Couch, James Couch, I'm going to do something for you. Now, let's reverse roll back. When are y'all going to do it? We, as citizens of Oklahoma City, on the northeast side of Oklahoma City, African-American community would love to be respected as everyone else. We're tired of police officers coming in there disrespecting us three or four cars, I mean, riding down on a stoplight out.
All right, Michael, thanks.
Thank y'all, everybody.
All right. Did anybody else want to speak on either the bond issue or the sales tax proposal? Good morning. We'll need your name and address for the record.
Ken Lawson, 2901 Brush Creek Road. I've worked for IBM for 30 years and retired, live in Quail Creek, and I have to readily admit that I was out of touch about what was going on in our community. I had a parent on the northeast side ask me to help our boy that was 12 years old, and got a chance to meet the family and ask questions, and then learned about a ridiculously high dropout rate and several low-performing schools, ridiculously high. And I said, how could I not be aware of that? So I got some folks together, and we started a mentoring program to mentor, to boys, middle school boys, in these low-performing schools. The point that I wanted to make this related to the sales tax is that I learned two things from this process of mentoring for four years, and John Pettis, councilman, came out and spoke to our boys, was that there's some tough family conditions there that contribute to these kids dropping out, and teaching them about trades and what they can be actually turns around their mindset about what they can be. And I really strongly support our police department, some of the initiatives there. Some of them were nice enough to come and speak to our boys, and our boys were pretty rude to them initially. But after they came out about that fourth time, we ended our program with some of these boys that didn't have a lot, lot of ambition, saying they want to be police officers. I was so proud of that. And my, my point that I made this related to the taxes, while I strongly support additional funding for teachers, I also think that we might want to look at expanding mentoring programs so that we can change this pipeline from education to prison. We spend so much money in city and our state on prison, and if we could invest some money on the front end to these middle school boys and girls that are at these schools that are low-performing, we can make our city better and our state better, and also, at least for me, you can sleep better at night. Thank you very much.
Thanks for coming in. All right. No decisions today, but comments from council heading into next week, which is when we would have votes on this and any other proposals that council would like to consider. Any comments today? Yeah, David?
Your Honor, it's more of a question at this point concerning how the state funds school districts. In Oklahoma, I think the goal is to try to keep school districts funded somewhat equally. So if the city, Oklahoma City Public School District, were to receive additional funding, just hypothetical, from the city, not that they would, but could the state then reduce their funding once they saw here's additional source of revenue coming into the school district?
I mean, if you've read the article from the mayor in Tulsa, that's specifically what he talks about, is this state funding formula and what impact that could have on us if we were to take some action.
Yeah.
And I don't know if I know the answer, but I've looked at an attorney general's opinion, I've looked at the Grimes case, I've looked at Article 3 of the Constitution, and those are things we really need to explore and make sure we're on solid ground if something like this was to happen.
Well, I share those concerns. I've not read the article, so I'm sorry, I don't know what that discussed, but I do think in general the state has that ability, and so if additional sources of revenue come in, I think they do have the ability, at least that's my interpretation, of reducing their subsidy to that school district in an effort to keep all school districts somewhat equal. The comment about us leading the way, I've given up on our legislature, especially, well, I don't know if it's just the rural legislators, they really don't have much interest in what we do at times, and so I would be concerned that they would just look upon us as a, as a means to get them out of a jam. I mean, this is really a state, as well as a local, funding issue, but the state certainly has dropped the ball with respect to their responsibilities for this. It wouldn't encourage them to change, in my opinion. It would, they would just see it as a solution that they didn't have to deal with. But I am concerned that if we did locally fund school districts, that that would just allow them to reduce the state's funding for those school districts who are receiving funds.
Ed?
I, just addressing the school component first, I don't pretend like this is an ideal solution. It's a desperate act for a desperate time. I think Governor Fallon and others have basically conceded nothing's going to happen at the legislature next year in an election year. So I think many of us feel like we cannot wait a minimum of two years for something to happen. So we need to try and make something happen to at least address Oklahoma City Schools, and that Mayor Bynum made a good case for that in the op-ed that you cited. We've researched this for many, many months. We've asked a lot of the questions that you're, that you're asking. I believe that you could fund Oklahoma City Schools with sales tax. I also believe that you could fund Oklahoma City Schools with income tax. I believe if you tried to do that with property tax, you would have a penalty in terms of the school, the state funding formula. But I don't think that that applies to sales tax. I don't think that applies to income tax. Enid, Elk City, and Lawton have all passed city sales tax to fund their schools, and Potawatomi County did the same. Potawatomi County is capital, and that's, that's been the focus, as was our MAPS for Kids program. But here's the bottom line, if anyone has a plan--
Were those taxed for operations?
Capital.
Were they for salaries? Were they?
So Potawatomi is capital, and I'm not sure about Enid, Elk City, and Lawton. If someone has a plan, then I'd love to hear it, and I'd love to jump on board, because this, doing an income tax or a sales tax has all kinds of hair on it. It's very difficult, it's going to be very expensive, and it's going to take a lot of work. So if there's another plan that I can jump on, I'd love to do that, and I'm sure others would also. But we have talked to death about Oklahoma City Schools and their condition being the key to corporate retention, being the key to corporate recruitment, being the key to neighborhood revitalization, being the key to economic development. The Brookings Institute report says, Oklahoma City, you are running out of time. That is the most haunting sentence of that whole study, is you are running out of time, and you have to do something now. So if there's an alternative proposal, I'd love to hear it. But the polling clearly shows that the people want the city of Oklahoma City to intervene. And if you, if you intervened in some way, the odds of it all passing increases significantly. I think one slide we didn't show is that if you add education, you do half of a penny for operations opposed to a quarter, voters prefer it two and a half to one. I think you'd virtually guarantee passage if you combined public safety and education. There are three ways that the city could help. Number one, we could put it on this sales tax initiative. Number two, which is not mutually exclusive, we could roll back the last quarter percent income tax that the legislature cut with their formula in 2014. Many people felt that that was, never should have happened, that they based it on projections in December that were faulty, and as soon as the real numbers came in in February, March, it was clear they never should have cut that last quarter percent from 5.25 to 5%. So on a temporary basis, for just four years, until the legislature comes up with a different solution, we can roll back that last quarter percent income tax cut, collect the money and distribute stipends on an annual or biannual basis to the teachers and support staff. And I think it is important to remember the support staff, because in Oklahoma City Schools, we have countless janitors, cafeteria workers, assistants to the principals, working for $13,000 a year. That's less than minimum wage on a, on an annual scale, but because it's only a 10-month school year, we, that's how they, they pay them, $13,000 a year. It's not, so it is, it is an absolute crisis. But you could, you could run an income tax that just on a temporary basis with the same kind of sunset that has made the MAPS program popular, we could put that on a ballot of the people. The council could do that. If the council did not want to do that, which I understand the political sensitivities of that, the polling aside, then we could run an initiative petition and, and collect the signatures, require roughly $12,000. Obviously, you'd want to get a lot more. And you could then do, do that proposal, where you collected the money, 50% went to school textbooks and to try and decrease class size, 50% goes to annual bonuses to the teachers and, and support staff. It's not, it only stops the hemorrhaging. It's not, it's not a solution, but it tells each teacher that's thinking about relocating to Texas or Arkansas, just hang on one more year. Just hang on and give us a chance, because the people of Oklahoma City want this. It's growing, it's coming to a head. Pain is what induces change in behavior, and the pain is growing. And so, and to give them some hope, there would be some action from the council. So what I would ask is that, again, these are not mutually exclusive. You could put a quarter of a penny on the sales tax and a quarter of a percent income tax. If you decide to do neither, then just give us a clear runway for launch. Let us try. Let us go to the Oklahoma Tax Commission and ask the questions that have never been asked before. No city has done an income tax before. We've initiated those conversations with the Oklahoma Tax Commission. Governor Walters has been very helpful. I need, to solve some of those logistical questions, I need Craig Freeman, our treasurer, Bob Ponkila, and I need Kenny Jordan, and whoever else Kenny Jordan would need. And I, to get Ponkila and Freeman, I need the city manager to okay that. To get the municipal councilor's office, I need five people in the council to let us do that. I need five up here. So if you have another solution, that's great. If not, just give us a, a clear runway to launch. Let us explore with the Oklahoma Tax Commission any unintended consequences. We, we need to figure out, if we were to do this, what are, what are the unintended consequences in terms of the funding formula, which you're bringing up? What else would happen if a city were to do a temporary income tax? And, and I need your help. So I need your help on, on all three of these, but I, I want to have that city staff sit, sit down with us, with the Oklahoma Tax Commission, to try and figure this all out. And so in one of those three ways, or all of them, that's what I'm asking for. I'd be very grateful.
Looking at national studies, when you look in terms of temporary tax changes, whether it's incentives, tax cuts, or in this case, a temporary income tax, they tend to create problems, and they often don't achieve what they intend to do. So if you're going to look at an income tax, I would suggest it be a permanent income tax. But cities, especially back east and in the northern part of the country, that do have a city sales tax, a city income tax, I mean, have a variety of administrative issues dealing with the collection of that income tax. And what you see is a growing interest of these separate incorporated cities within the cities, you'll see economic activity move to them, because those wages within that, you know, community like Bethany would be exempt from the city, Oklahoma City's income tax. So you've got a lot of issues. You'd see migration outside of the city limits. And so, especially if you're going to do it solely for funding Oklahoma City Public Schools education, I think you've got a big challenge in front of you. Now, if you want to--
On the side of implementation, collection, and enforcement?
Yeah, the administration is really challenging.
Big issue.
Okay. So I'm just throwing that out there to give you a heads up. As an alternative that you asked for, so my daughter-in-law is a second-grade teacher in a school district in Tennessee, and she, about 20% of her salary is funded through contributions from businesses and individuals. And that's not uncommon in school districts in Tennessee. The citizens of Tennessee recognize the importance of quality education and are willing to provide funding, you know, for teacher salaries. And it's strictly teacher salaries that these contributions go for. They've got public school foundations for these school districts, but the money does not go through that. Many times, those foundations are great at raising money, but it's dispersment of funding of monies where they fall short. And so these monies are contributed directly to the school districts, and it's, it's not uncommon for 20% of the salary to be funded from contributions. And it's consistent, year after year after year.
Again, those aren't mutually exclusive, and you could do both. You could certainly have donations from the business community and private individuals. I, I know, I think what, I know what the challenges are at the Oklahoma Tax Commission in terms of, of collections. I don't know potentially what any unintended consequences, and I need the personnel that I talked about to have, to put all that experience and, and brain power in one room and trying to figure it out. You have to pay a vendor a setup fee. It's never been done before. There's, there's setup costs, because no city has had an income tax. Once you pay that upfront fee, then any city in Oklahoma can do it, and it's, it's relatively cheap going forward. You have issues of do employers do withholding, and I, and I think that we've figured out that we would not do that. And so I think that we've already worked through, in our conversations with the Oklahoma Tax Commission, a lot of the issues. There is more work to be done.
Ed, I would strongly advise, if you're going to go through with an income tax, you want your employers to do the withholding.
I don't think that we can, and I can explain, or I don't think that they can. But we're talking about, if somebody makes a median income of $30,000--
Right.
I mean, they're, then they pay their federal, and so your taxable income, I mean, it might be $10,000 that they're doing, a municipal income tax is $25 a year.
Yeah.
I mean, you can't go through all employer withholding for $25 a year. So I don't, I don't think that we would do an employer withholding, and I think that's the opinion of Oklahoma Tax Commission, is that it would just be that $25 at the, at the end of the year. But again, more, more work needs to be done there. I'd be very grateful if, if the council would okay us exploring that, at least.
As I listen to this, I think one of, one of the terms that came out was unintended consequences. Today, we don't know all of the facts involved in this, in this particular issue. I would suggest, however, that if somebody wants to raise money for schools with an innovative idea, that that is the purview of the school system to investigate and evaluate, and not us. Thank you, Your Honor.
I completely, completely agree with what Larry just said.
The, Oklahoma City has 620 square miles and has 24 school districts, so which school district do you ask? The city, we're, we, we go across four counties, I think. Which county do you ask? The city of Oklahoma City is the only entity that could address all 620 square miles. There's no, you can't get all 24 school districts to do something. We are the common thread in all 620 square miles. We're in a unique position to do that. David, I think that the, you don't want people going to other municipalities because we have a higher income tax. And I think, although I agree with you on the, the permanent income tax, I think the way that we've polled it suggests that people like the idea of a temporary in tax, income tax until the legislature gets a solution. And when we ask them specifically, if the legislature, in the unlikely event they were to increase their income tax, this would go away, that adds to the number of people that are, that are likely to vote for it. So I do think that it needs to pass a vote of the people, and so that is a consideration. But making it temporary, I think it makes it unlikely that somebody's going to sell their home in Oklahoma City and move into a surrounding municipality for a temporary income tax that sunsets in, in three or four years.
But we do have 24 school districts in Oklahoma City, but a good number of those school districts are large school districts, large organizations that the-- school districts are large school districts, large organizations that the teachers within those school districts are their employees. And so, they are closer to the problem than we are. We're a lot further away from the problem, and they know, they should know how to fix it better than we ever will.
And I think you see Paula Lewis here, who's the school board chair. I mean, she, and we're all locked, our arms locked in solidarity. I mean, they are part of it. They are, have been a part of the discussions of coming up with this plan. So they very much have been part of the creation and would definitely, you couldn't do the execution without them. This is a joint effort with Oklahoma City Public Schools.
I think everybody sitting at this horseshoe wants to help teachers. We want to do everything we can for teachers. And we are very disappointed with what the legislature has done. But I would caution you, and I just looked at this last night when I were looking at the Sooner Poll materials, and I don't know a lot about it, but I think that there are constitutional issues, Constitutional Article 13. There is a concept of vertical equity, where other school districts may try to attack what you're doing. And I don't want to dampen if you want to try to do this. I'm just telling you, it's not something that's going to happen overnight, and it's not something that will be without a lawsuit.
The fastest way to get money into the schools is to put it on this sales tax, and then the money starts coming in on January 1st. So that is fastest. So the sales tax is much faster in terms of income tax. We have asked opinions of Dan Bachelor, we have asked the CFO of Oklahoma City Schools to research this, we have asked people in the state about vertical equity and whether this would punish them in terms of the funding formula, and the answer is no. I relish a discussion about vertical equity. I relish a discussion about how property tax is being valued in rural communities versus Oklahoma City, and how Oklahoma City schools are being punished with the state funding formula. And ultimately, that's the long-term solution, is that I think the state funding formula favors property tax. We pay more property tax than we're getting back for our schools. So let's talk about vertical equity. And let's talk about the Supreme Court decision that just came out that said, you've got to spend all this money on special education. You can't just, that's all going to be in Oklahoma City. So let's talk about what Oklahoma City schools are faced with versus rural communities. And I think that Supreme Court decision, if anything, warrants an additional consideration. It's an additional bit of gravity and pressure on Oklahoma City Public Schools.
And, you know, nowhere on our agenda and nowhere within the plan as written, which I think is a good plan, and a plan that is very responsive to what our citizens have been telling us over the last decade, at least. I think that the plan that, as written in our agenda, is, I heard somebody tell me that it is a gift to the next mayor, because he doesn't, the next mayor won't have to do any of this work, and it is funding the core functions of our government, of our city government, at levels that I don't think we've ever done before, as far as police, fire, and street resurfacings. And so, I think that this is a very responsive, or responsible, and effective way of doing what the citizens of Oklahoma City want us to do, and the things that we are actually responsible to do. So that's just my...
All right, Todd?
I'd just like to say, down in our ward, we still have a fire station down there that has been funded, that we can't get built because we're waiting on staffing. So I fully support the public safety piece of this. And as far as the roads, to me and the poll, I mean, you could almost combine the maintenance and pothole piece of it. I can tell you out knocking doors, it's hugely important. I would love to see a plan come forward to help education. I just don't think it's going to necessarily be tied in with this. And honestly, it's such a complex issue, I would almost argue that Oklahoma City is the common thread across the 24 districts, but each one of those districts are its own. So it almost, for us to try and do it across 24 districts, you know, Paula's here today, fantastic, where's the other 23? I don't know. Maybe some of their teachers are here, but for us to try and corral those 24 different districts and try and do something like that, to me, makes it even more complex and harder to get something done in this. That being said, I would love to see, you know, a plan for the future.
Okay. Yeah, John?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Every eight seconds of a school day, an American student gives up his or her dreams and drops out of school. From that moment, life choices are very limited and chances for success is small. I have a total of nine school districts in Ward 7. Again, a total of nine school districts in Ward 7. The biggest one, of course, is Oklahoma City Public Schools. I do ask myself the question, what about the other struggling school districts, such as Millwood, Cricket Oak, and Crutcho Schools, which they are struggling? And those four school districts, population consists of majority-minority students. It is sad to say that, in those four schools, districts, that the schools are struggling left and right. It's hard to get seasoned teachers into those schools. I do believe that we have to find a solution. What that solution is, I don't know. I do appreciate you, Dr. Shadid, for trying to find some answers, because we do need to explore to try to find some solutions. But at the same time, as a city that is 620 square miles, I represent a total of 140 square miles. Potholes, streets, is an issue, especially if you look at some of the underserved areas within Ward 7, northeast Oklahoma City, the south side. And so, this is, I think, is going to be a very complex issue, but I do believe we must have further discussions.
Okay. Anybody else? All right. How many votes do we need, if any? We don't need any, do we, on the public hearings?
Not today.
All right. I'm sure several people want to leave now that we've ended that discussion, so we'll allow you to get up and leave, and I'll give you a minute to get out, so we can hear. It's quite noisy when people all get up at the same time. All right, we're on 9X. All right, item 9X, I understand we do not need executive session?
Your Honor, one thing. May I go back to item 9W for just a second?
Well, you could, but the people that just left the room might not like it.
I know, but I just want to make one comment.
All right.
No, we were going to, I thought you were still going to cover each resolution, one by one, and I'm so sorry.
That's all right.
But taking a look at this resolution, 9W, which is the intent and resolve, there is an Exhibit A that goes with 9W, and the Exhibit A talks about the quarter cent and how it will be spent. And one of the things in looking at that the last couple of days, just from a lawyer's perspective, I thought that it needed to be tightened up a little. It needed to be revisited. And what I meant by that is, I want to make sure that future city council members understand what our intent is quite clearly. And I would ask that, and I'd like to pass out today, some changes that I made to Exhibit A, and I'd like people to start considering it now. And this was the work, I did part of it, Larry had some ideas that he put into it. And what the intent is, is to make sure that future council members know that this is about police and fire, that this money is devoted to police and fire. I've had the privilege the last two years of working with the police chief and the fire chief, and when those two people tell me that they need this money, I get it, and I'm going to help them get that money. I just want to make sure it's tied to those provisions. And so, with all due respect, I'd ask you to consider my amendments to Exhibit A. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. All right, item X, said we do not need executive session, should just a motion to move it on would be imperative. Is there a second?
Seven.
All right, cast your votes. It passes unanimously.
Mark, can I just ask about your, so basically, you're saying we would fund the 186 positions in fire and police? I get that. And then after funding is guaranteed for those 186 positions, then and only then can we use additional revenues to fund police or fire services, facilities, or equipment?
I want to make the first two top priority.
I understand that.
Go to number three. I don't want somebody, excuse me.
I don't want somebody five, six years from now, whenever, deciding to go to number three first and ignore one and two. This is about police and fire, and I want to keep it about police and fire, and I want to make sure that we emphasize our intent.
I'm just trying to understand. I mean, that's how I read it the last time, because it had very specific numbers about police and fire, and it didn't have any specific numbers about anything else. So that's how I think it read before, but...
And I think another important point is, in paragraph three that Larry added, it makes sure that these additional funds that come after one and two can also be used for police and fire, and their services, their facilities, and their equipment. And I think that's an important point.
So is that capital? That's what I'm trying to understand. Is it capital for fire and police?
Sure, yes.
Well, I think it's broad enough to be...
Services.
Service or capital.
Service or capital.
It could be service too, yes.
As I read it, it says that the funding's guaranteed. So we've got to make sure that we've got the funding set aside for what's in one and two, and then we can still do some other items beyond that, but we've got to make sure that we preserve that funding to accomplish what's in one and two, which gets us to the, you know...
Did I state your position accurately? Larry, I don't want to speak for you.
It doesn't necessarily mean that we have to have the 48 replaced and the 81 hired before we can do anything else. It means to make sure that we got the funding guaranteed for those positions before we do it.
Tell me, give me your best guess, which I know is a guess, of how many years it would take to get 186 positions filled?
I think we're talking at least three years in the police department to get those numbers, if not more than that. In the fire department, it's more logistics with the facilities. And so, you wouldn't necessarily get that Southwest Fire Station staffing done and have those guys waiting around, waiting for the police station, or the fire station to be completed. So you'd want to dovetail that and have that in place when the fire station is complete. I'm not sure the timeframe on that, but I would think the first station would be pretty quick, and putting back the positions on fire station, or on Fire Engine 51 would be pretty quick, and then it may take another year or so to get that other station built.
So it would take at least five years to get all 186, or more than five years?
Oh, I don't think so.
You don't think with the fire stations and...
Well, first of all, the fire staffing and the police staffing are totally independent. Fire's doing their thing at the same time.
I understand.
The police is doing their thing. I look at it, and I think this is pretty close, but the fact of the matter is that we have about 50 positions that we lose every year in retirement in the police department, roughly. And if we were to have two classes a year of 50, and the last class they had was greater than 50, but if we could have 50, two classes, you could replace 50, and then you could add 50 each year. So if you're adding this number theoretically, if you're losing 50 every year, you could do it in three years.
So...
I mean, I'm, what's that?
That's below 70.
Okay, thank you.
So, I mean, in the long term, not even this is going to get you the 200 police officers that we've talked about needing.
Well, okay.
But I'm just, I'm talking about like year one. Year one, $25 million comes in, right? You don't have 186 police and fire hired yet.
That's correct.
So what, how does paragraph three govern what you do with the $25 million in year one and year two, when you don't have the 186 yet? Can you spend it on parks, or pothole maintenance, or transit, or the other things that are listed on here? There's like 10 things listed on here.
I want to ensure that we put aside the money that's needed for police and fire that Chief City and Chief Bryan has requested, before we start spending it on other things. I want, even if it's just set aside and it's safe...
Well, Chief City's asked for, I mean, he said we need 200 officers, so we're not going to get what Chief City has recommended, but...
If the money can be used for additional police, I don't know the numbers, the complete numbers. I know what was set forth in paragraph one and two, but if the need is greater than that, then paragraph three can kick in to help pay for those police and fire.
So what would be the priority in year one and two, when you don't have the number of officers yet? I mean, is it police and fire capital? Is it...
I don't think that's a fair assumption, that there won't be enough. We will be hiring and graduating, and we have 50 that take off or retire every year. It's going to take a period of time for that money to come in the door. It's not going to come in immediately.
Well, it starts January 1st.
I agree.
Larry?
One of the intents of this was to position ourselves to meet unexpected needs as we move into the future for police and fire. Right now, we are constrained by how many policemen we can put on, for example, by some physical constraints as far as our facilities, but we're also, correct me if I'm wrong, guys, constrained by having the personnel available to train those people. If we have the funds available, all right, and we have a need for additional policemen in the future, due to what goes on outside of these halls here, as far as crime is concerned, this gives us the mechanism to attack the problem and add additional people with some creative thinking to attack that situation as it comes in year one, three, or five down the road. So that's kind of the intent right there.
I mean, I just don't want people going to paragraph three immediately and start spending money on parks. This is about police and fire.
I kind of like how it was originally done, because it gives a little bit more latitude. It doesn't make it so restrained, even though I do agree that the priorities are police and fire, and I think it, the original, how it was written originally was, I think articulated that pretty well, but it still left a little room for where you can use some of it for the third priority, but clearly the first two priorities, I don't know. But it seems to restrain it a little bit too much on the change, but I could go either way.
If this is about police and fire, why not just do a dedicated quarter percent, quarter cent for police and fire?
I wouldn't have any problem with that whatsoever.
I don't think they would either. Okay?
Well, honestly, I mean, might as well be honest about this. If you start dedicating certain portions of revenue, there's a way to back into whatever number you want to get to. So save what you want, do what you want. It's not foolproof. You can still reduce general funding to a particular area if you've got certain amounts of dedicated funding. That's just reality. When the legislature does that, or the federal government, or anybody, they're just fooling people that don't really try to look through all the issues, in my opinion.
That's why I think restraining it is not a good idea, because who knows what's going to be going on in 15 years?
I think you're opening yourself up to potential problems. You can certainly state your intentions and your desire, and Mark, you know, I don't think any authority has the ability to be overridden, you know, after the next election. They have the ability to come in and redo the entire budget, I believe. So, I mean, I just think...
I just want to make sure that the...
No, no, I understand, yeah.
...Oklahoma City that are going to vote on this, that it was our intent that this go to police and fire, and not artwork or something else.
I get that. I understand, but I'm just saying, let's give people a little bit of credit for a certain ability to look beyond what this may say and realize, okay, if you're going to dedicate, there's still ways to back money out. And if you want to do that, that's okay, but let's make sure everybody understands this does not identify a specific dollar amount, for example, that will be going to a particular age... for example, that will be going to a particular agency. And that's what you have to do, in a sense, if you want to make sure you're going to get a certain dollar figure. You have to be that specific, and I don't know if anybody wants to be tied to that type of, of, of a statute or a budget.
I just want to make sure it's strong enough where people understand what the intent was, and that's, that's my goal.
But I don't, I mean, that's...
And I think that was Larry's goal.
It was never explained that way to me. I mean, I, I understood that we were going to spend 66, 70% like we do on our general fund, and that the other departments that are also starving, AFMI employees, parks, planning, transit, public works, that we could plug some of, I mean, we're, we're laying people off. We're, we're, we're cutting our budget. I mean, that was, so if we're going to do the full quarter of a penny for police and fire, great, but that's an argument, I think, back to what I've been saying for months now, which is do a half penny for operations because they need a quarter of a penny, and the other departments need something. So if this all goes to police and fire, you're going, you're going to hurt the other departments once you bring on a $3 million streetcar and a $3 million park into the, our, our maintenance dollars.
It's not the intent to hurt any other departments. I, I even talked to Chief City about that, and he was very articulate and well spoken about, we, we have to think about the other departments too, and that's why there's a paragraph three. I just want people to remember, two, three years from now, why we did this. That simple.
I made a quick comment. The council has made commitments when they've done elections in the past that are no more than resolutions or even less than that. Resolution on map three was just a resolution on what the projects were. We promised the voters this is what we're going to do. The council has always stood by those election promises. Even less of, of something that's been tied down is the 16 mills on the general obligation bonds. That's, that's, that's an obligation by the council that that's where we're going to keep it, and we tell the citizens that that's what we're going to do when we go forward with the GO bonds, and we've always done that. That's, we've never, never swayed for that. And, and so again, when we're laying out that this is what we're going to do with this quarter cent sales tax and put the majority for, for public safety and identifying specific areas, I'm not worried that the council's not going to do that. But I also, you know, getting it down in a resolution or, or some, some way, I, I believe that the, the council's going to do it. I, I think it would be very difficult after you, you, you make a commitment in that level that you wouldn't do it, but the, the quarter cent still leaves a little bit of room beyond that to do some other things that we need to do within, whether it's to help the transit services, whether it's, it's to do some things for parks or whatever we need to do, even, for gosh sakes, a couple of additional people in IT where we've certainly cut over the past few years. We're going to have a little bit of room to be able to do those things in, in, in the future.
And I believe history shows that the council has always done what it said it was going to do.
Absolutely.
The only thing that concerns me, and, and I'm not trying to overemphasize this, but when it says can be used as opposed to shall be used, different people can interpret that different ways. If it's shall, it's going to be used for police and fire. That's simple.
I mean, what do we do about this proposal that the chamber wants a full penny? I mean, I, I haven't heard that before, and we're not going to get to meet again as a group until we vote on it, I guess. I mean, is that, is that an option? Because there's another quarter penny. We're, we're going to do a, we're going to do a quarter penny permanent and a full penny temporary, which then makes this permanent a tax increase?
Well, I've only heard that mentioned once, so I wouldn't call that an actual proposal.
Someone could make that proposal next week.
Somebody could make it to change it, I guess, but I haven't heard that from anybody else.
One of us could make that proposal next week. But I'm, I'm uncomfortable when we closed the public hearing and everybody left, and now we're still talking about it.
And that's my fault. I thought you were going to cover each item individually.
I understand, it was an honest mistake, but...
I apologize.
To start bringing up other ideas, I think we, let's, let's just move on. Okay. We're on item Y. Understand we do not need executive session, so how about a motion there?
Move that.
All right. Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item 9Z, we do need executive session, so a motion to move that to executive session would be in order.
Move that.
All right. Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. All right. Item 9AA, claims recommended for denial. Is there anyone here hoping to speak under any item listed under 9AA? All right. How about a motion?
Move that.
All right. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 10A is claims recommended for approval. Is there anyone here hoping to speak on any of these items?
Move that.
Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 11 is a resolution that would appoint Filippa James as municipal judge, her term being two years, starting on July 1st. Is there a motion?
Move the item.
Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 11B is a resolution that would report Edward D. Hasbrook as a municipal judge for that same two-year period. Is there a motion?
Move the item.
Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 11C is a resolution that would designate Filippa C. James as the presiding judge for a one-year period. Is there a motion?
I would move the item, and I'd also say that, I'd like to say that she has done an excellent job as our presiding judge.
Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 11D is a resolution that would appoint, would designate M. Fred Austin as the vice presiding judge during that one-year period.
Move the item.
Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 11E is a resolution that would establish the compensation and benefits for the position of municipal judge.
Move the item.
Cast your votes. Needs six votes. Gets eight. Item 11F is a resolution that would reimburse the Councilman John Pettis for his attendance at the National League of Cities, the National Black Caucus of Local Elected Officials in Birmingham. Is there a motion?
Move the item.
Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. John, thanks for doing that. Item 11G is an item that's being introduced today. Jim, what do you want to do about this one?
I'd like to have Cindy Richard explain it to us.
All right.
Mayor and Council, Cindy Richard with the Municipal Counselors Office. We were originally approached on this by Councilman Stone Cypher after what happened in his ward with the dog attack, and he asked us specifically to look at issues of registration of dogs, both that are at large and unconfined, as well as for menacing and dangerous dogs. And then Councilman McAtee came on in support of that, and finally, Councilman Pettis had a suggestion about holding property owners also responsible if they're not the same person as dog owners. So I'd just like to go through what we've done, and, and I do apologize to the council members for the time that it took, but Chapter Eight, which is the animal chapter, is, is kind of like when you click one domino over, they all are connected and intertwined. So we had to be careful as we were beginning our amendments, that we kept everything straight and logical. So first, I want to talk about what we're doing for those dogs that are found at large or failed to be confined. Those are Class A offenses and always have been and will remain so. What we're adding there is a one-time registration where when the owner comes in to reclaim the dog, they'll have to use forms provided by the shelter to register the dog, give a specific information, and that dog will also be required before its release to be spay neutered and microchipped. And that information on the microchip will be kept on file then if that dog gets loose again. And those are, oh, and also the, the person, the owner, will have to submit information to show that the enclosure or the fencing is in good repair so that dog will remain confined on the property.
Cindy?
Yes, sir.
Excuse me, can I ask a question?
Absolutely.
I'm just throwing out a scenario. Somebody has, let's say, a, a pretty valuable dog that's used in breeding. Somebody goes into their backyard, leaves the gate open, the dog escapes. Do we have the ability to spade or neuter that dog?
We've created an exception. John Gary, the Superintendent of Animal Welfare, brought that issue forward as we were discussing this, and if the owner can bring proof to the shelter that the dog is like an AKC-registered dog or some other reliable information, that the dog is purebred and therefore would have a higher property value actually because of that ability to breed, then there's an exception created in the ordinance on the spay neuter, not for the microchipping, but for the spay neuter.
Yeah. Well, thank you. But when is that determination made?
After the dog is impounded.
Is reclaimed, okay.
It's, it's the time of reclaim.
I mean, when is, when is the animal spayed or neutered? At the time it's brought in or before release?
It's before release.
Okay.
Otherwise, he's okay.
We also, as we were trying to accomplish the things that were requested by council members, we also wanted to do a couple of things that have needed to be done for a while. So one of the changes that we're proposing is a fostering arrangement for those animals that are subject, the animals that are subject to charges of cruelty or neglect, rather than them kind of languishing in the shelter while those cases go through our system. And sometimes the cruelty cases, which are Class B offense, can go on for quite a while, months sometimes. And so there are organizations that will foster those animals and maybe in a kinder, gentler setting than the shelter, and so we wanted to create the ability for the superintendent to approve those foster placements during the course of a trial. Finally, we get to the menacing and dangerous scenario. We've always had dangerous animals, which pretty much requires a bite in the definition, not always, but most of the time. Those have always been a, a case where the animals were impounded and dealt with in a pretty set manner. Menacing was what we looked at, and currently menacing is defined as a dog that is unconfined or off the leash and causes a reasonable person to believe that an unprovoked attack on a person or animal is imminent. We're proposing, and, and again, this came from the Superintendent of Animal Welfare, and we're proposing a new definition that gets a little more to the heart of the matter, a little more descriptive. So it's about a dog being unprovoked, that charges, growls, snarls, takes an aggressive stance, shows teeth, destroys property to get to a human or animal. It will not be considered menacing if that animal is still on the owner's property unless his attempts, the animal's attempts to escape appear reasonably likely to be successful. So in other words, if a dog is charging at its own fence and starts to rip that fence apart to be able to get through, then that dog may be considered menacing. Councilman Pettis asked us to look at holding property owners responsible, and while that's difficult to do with at-large or unconfined animals, because of the, the way the animal can be confined on a tether and that sort of thing, for a menacing or dangerous animal, we can find ways then to put that property owner on notice so that they can be responsible and help require the, the appropriate fencing and enclosures on the property. So we've added a provision for that. Now, menacing or dangerous, the dog can be released back to the owner by the court that can be ordered currently, and there's a specific list under the ordinance that the judge can look at and say, you have to do these things in order to have your dog released back to you. And so now we're adding that kind of a hearing situation for menacing dogs also. Before, it was dangerous. Now it will include menacing. And if the court chooses to believe that the dog could be kept reasonably, could be kept safe and away from escape and that sort of thing, then the court could order the release. If the court orders that, the animal shelter will have the responsibility to make sure that that dog is annually registered, not just a one-time, but annual, and they will also go out annually and verify that the court's orders for those specificities are, are in compliance by the owner. The animal will also be spay and neutered in the same way as the at-large dogs and microchipped. That will no longer be optional in a court order. That's going to be required for animal shelters to do with those animals. We've also added that if you fail to do that annual registration, or you fail to comply with a court order, those are separate offenses. We currently have those offenses of menacing and dangerous as a Class A offense, which people get understandably upset about. They say, why are you hard on the dog but not on the owner? Well, here's, here's the issue. When you have a Class B offense, that entitles you to a jury trial as a defendant, and those can just last longer in the system. It's just not unusual for it to be months, if not a year, and in the meantime, you're holding that dog. And so previously, we've had that as a Class A offense, so the case would go quickly and the dog could be dealt with, either unfortunately euthanized or released under certain conditions. What we're going to do now is add that for a second or subsequent offense, in other words, if the, if the court released your dog back to you the first time, and now it gets out again, now you can be charged with a Class B offense on the second or subsequent offense, and that's added on. And the final thing is that there's a $12 registration fee for those annual and initial registrations. That may seem small, but you should know that the other things are set apart separately in Chapter 60. The microchipping and the spay neutering and the shelter fees are already in Chapter 60 and already exist. Thank you, Mayor.
Thanks, Cindy.
Your Honor, just a couple of things. I never will forget that when I had to call Cecilia Short's daughter and offer our condolences on behalf of Oklahoma City when her mother tragically lost her life is one of the most difficult things I've ever done. And then to add on to that, I started researching this ordinance, and I started talking to the Hefner Division, and I talked to Major Nelson over there, and he informed me that within less than 60 days prior to that accident, that death, that there had been another attack in my neighborhood and, in our ward, and it was a lady just jogging and viciously attacked by two large dogs. And so this ordinance took a lot of work, and it took a lot of time. It's made to be punitive on repeat offenders, but I'd specifically like to say, say thank you to Jonathan Gary, Bob Teener, Laura Johnson, Orville Jones, Rita Douglas Tally, Kenny Jordan, and of course Cindy for working on this. It took a lot of work, and, and she said it took a lot of time. It did take a lot of time, but it's, it's a good ordinance. Thank you.
Yeah. Yeah, Todd?
Mayor, could, could someone explain to me what that process looks like to the landowner? And how you would tie it back that way? Or how you would notify them, I guess?
What would happen is that when the dog owner was charged that initial time, then Animal Welfare will make sure then that the property owner is put on notice by a written notice so that in the future, you know, they, they won't say they were surprised or unaware.
Excellent. Thank you. That sounds like a good ordinance, and I appreciate Mark and everyone else that worked on that. Thank you.
So as the example, you're talking about a situation where the animal is kept by somebody other than the owner?
Correct. It could be, well, and I'm thinking of someone, if someone's renting a home and, and all of a sudden they bring a dog in...
Oh, yeah.
And the owner of the property may not even be aware there's a dog there.
Thank you. Yeah. I get it.
Okay. Great. Thanks.
Okay. All right. We need a motion on 11G. It's item being introduced today, public hearing next week, and then a final hearing on July 5th.
Move the item.
Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. All right. Items from Council. Mark, you have anything else for us?
I don't. I think you're all right.
Okay. John?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do want to recognize, I see we do have our youth council members here, Ward Seven, council, youth council members, Ishmael and Christian. I just want to thank both of you all for your service that you all have done for our great city and especially for Ward Seven these, this past year. And also, I do want to recognize again my Ward Seven Planning Commissioner, Dr. Cooper, who's here today.
All right. David? Todd? Larry? Ed? James? All right. City manager reports.
Nothing this morning.
All right. Citizens to be heard. Joe Serge Nelson.
Mr. Mayor, today I've got a little disturbing news for y'all. Last week when I left City Hall, I had a phone call, and it was that disturbing to me. When my health's at risk, I jump off the ban... When my health's at risk, I jump off the bandwagon and take a look. I drove for nearly an hour with this lady, and I went to the southeast part of Oklahoma I was led to believe, and I did turn it over to the Department of Economic and Envelopement Quality, and when I got out there, I took some pictures. I don't have enough to give them all to you, but I will tell you this one. This picture right here is called, as I was led to believe, that somebody's dumping raw, toxic, chemically-treated hazardous waste in our sewer line. I confirmed it. It is happening. I've got pictures of the manholes they're putting it in. This is not even registered by the DEA. It is so well-hidden, it is unbelievable. We drove for an hour trying to find it, and when I finally asked the person, I said, "Where are you taking me to? I'm cleaning out the boondocks." I didn't think this was funny. It's quite a deal up here. It looks like a pond until you get up real close to it. It's raw sewage, chemically-treated, and it's classed as hazardous waste because it's toxic. Back and back on the north side of it is sandbags. Out in the middle of it is a dipstick, kind of like in a car, but it's footage. It's not even supposed to be close to this level. I can't give you all of the information that I've got because it's under investigation by the DEA as we speak. I do know that trucks took it to a particular area, and there are two other areas that they're dumping this stuff directly into our sewer main. And when I saw this, and I took pictures of where the mains are, the area that it's in, and it's costing the city a lot of money. One of the documents I read, I know that three on this council are fully aware of it. The rest of your council may not be aware of it at all, and I'm not even sure the mayor is fully aware of what I'm talking about. In fact, I'd be rest assured that he's not. But this is going to be brought to you all. The state's looking into it as we speak, and if you have any question, I did make requisitions for documents that I've already got copies of. I just want to see if the city's going to give me what I request for. There's three pieces of paper asking for the trucks, trips, everything that was carrying the toxic waste and the manholes they were putting it in. And additional information is a letter from the DEQ to me where they are under investigation, and they are checking into this to make sure that this is real. If this is real, as I suspect that it is, somebody is in for a lot of trouble, more than they can possibly dream. And...
Joe, we're going to have to wrap you up.
Okay, Mr. Mayor.
Appreciate you bringing that to our attention. Ronnie Kirk.
Mr. Mayor, Council, and Pete White, today I stand before you to let you know that a long time ago when I was a kid, my teacher said, "Do a lone tree in the woods make a sound." Today I stand before you to tell you yes. I've been in business 48 years in one location. I have a 501(c)(3) certification from the state, 17 years. I never used it. I never depended on anybody for help. I worked two jobs to make sure the functions I had were successful. I have 28 years of city permits to block the streets off for 350 people, 500 people, 1,000 people. The kids all ate free. It's on every certificate I ever got from the state, certified stamped. I made all share, every event that I gave was family oriented. The kids ate free for 28 years. I gave them a chance to be kids, have fun. I bought a moonwalk years ago where they could jump in it, play in it, had people to come help me. I served them food, pop, popcorn, and then charged them one penny. To this day, I still do the same thing. I have never lost a penny on feeding kids for 28 years. On May 26th, I was nominated and put in the Black Hall of Fame on 47 and Lincoln Boulevard for all the activities and things that I did for kids for years. I adopted Prince Hall Apartments, one of the, where everybody say, "All the bad kids come from." The manager said, "I can bring my dancers." I got some little kids. They're from three years old to seven years old. Teaching them to dance. The manager said, "I can bring, come over there and bring them to entertain their kids, the worst kids in Oklahoma City." And he said, "I can bring them over there anytime and perform for his kids at their I have a group of the kids, they are the Divine Diamond Diva dancers. They're just three to seven years old. I mean, three to 13 years old. On here, that's my grandson. He's nine years old. He holds up a little sign that says, "Kids eat free." He helps me. My other grandson came to me on, we have had a function for the, our little kid dancers to raise some money. One of my grandson, he's just seven years old. He came up to me and said, "Papa, what can I do?" Boy, that made me feel so good. I try to mentor people all my life. Once, 20 years ago, had a city worker come to me. He just started his job, just started, bought me a pair of boots, trying to sell them to me. I told this boy, "You take them boots back to that job. That's one of the best paying jobs in town, and you got one." And he took them boots back, and he became a supervisor, bought him a house, bought him a car, and every time he bought something, he'd come by and tell me thanks. After he retired, he still come by and tell me thanks. I once had a shooting from some gang bangers. Came by my place and shot one guy that worked with me. Shot him in the hip. And so the parents of the boy that shot him bought the kid back up there. The kids from my partner's family came by, "Ron, we can get them. We know who did this. We know who did it." Boy, they had guns, big guns. And I said, "No, we're going to work that out." And the lady bought her son back by there, made him apologize, and we took care of that just by talking. Another incident, I had someone, you know what they have crips and hooves? They chasing a boy up the street. The boy run up to my place. Here comes six guys trying to follow. You know what they say to that boy? "Boy, we glad you made it up to Mr. Kirk's." And they turned around and went the other way. Because I've been feeding these kids ever since they were kids, and I fed their kids. They are grown now. So all I wanted to do is come down here to tell you that, oh, one more thing. You know she don't see too much graffiti on the east side? It's not a road on building, because all these years, 28 years, I've been telling my kids, "You don't have to do that." So today, y'all can drive through the east side, you don't see a whole lot of graffiti over there. You just don't. Because in life, you can tell people stuff, and they will listen to you. That's all I wanted to come down and say. There is good news on the east side.
Ronnie, there's been a lot of rounds of applause today, but I'm going to lead one for you in a life well-lived. Thank you very much for everything.
Thank you. Thanks a lot. Y'all have a good day.
We have executive session. We'll be back.
Thank you.
Oh, hold on. Michael, you want to talk again?
Yes.
I was afraid of that. All right.
In closing, though, seriously speaking, I am very, very deeply impressed with the opportunity, not for myself to speak, but others. I'm a little bit taller than everybody else here. Okay. I just want to say, like the gentleman spoke about here, I've known him for some time and has been a community activist, but I don't want the idea to fly by lightly that Michael Washington is not doing his duty here on the northeast side of Oklahoma City. Gang violence, graffiti and all the stuff that he's talking about is great, but when you don't have someone who can actually stand up to these young kids and to pull their coattails and to let them see that they have a greater future waiting on them, the prison systems are going to continue to be filled with us. Right now, we're leading incarceration of women, which is a very terrible thing. Now then, in realizing that fact, if mama's already in prison and we know more likely daddy is, then what does that make the child more than likely awarded to state? So in other words, we need measures put in place educationally wise, as well as sociably wise and community-wise, that are going to be geared toward reaching these young kids. Again, in a multi-group of people that I deal with, my concern is to reach these people. Change your world, and your world will change around you. Because tomorrow's children could also be the adult prisoner, and we want to cut all that out. We, again, as American citizens, have a duty to not only sit back in the seat that you people are here in, and which is a great seat to be in. That's why hopefully that what we're saying today will not fly by night, but actually stick into your brain cells in that people today need the representation that they can feel and rely on. We need people in our communities going to say that that child does deserve a chance, that he will be given a chance, he or she, and that they will be given an opportunity to be raised in an environment where it's conducive to their mental, educational, and economic welfare. Today, again, in blighted areas that I live in, if you go in those neighborhoods, oh my God, not personally mine in and of itself, the central area, because I live a little bit further out from where all the, you know, stuff like that, but when I walk to 23rd Street where the store is, you know, I see little guys, little gang bangers with their pants hanging down on their behinds as if, you know, I don't guess, two or three size pants too big for them or whatever. You know, I've often asked the question, "What's really going on?" And then when you also have one person saying that my flag is better than yours because mine is red and yours is blue. Okay, if you don't have community activities that are going on to gear toward these people, in other words, you just can't rely on the citizens ourselves. We need government institutions in place. For example, let me get ready to close. We have this Freedom Center. We know that Mother Clara Lupa, rest her soul, left a great monument there. But if you go to that place, this is one of the most things on my mind has been bothering me. You go to that place, and you see a lot of people that have done great things for African-American community, and these African-American inventors and psychologists and mine workers or whatever and so forth and so on, historians. You go in now, and you look at that building, it's so dilapidated. I mean, what are we doing to preserve that monument? If nothing else, it should be a monument set aside so when people of all colors can drive by, they say, "What is that beautiful monument thing? Oh, my God, let me go over and check this out." I'll tell my little son, who's Hispanic or European or Asian, "Oh, man, look at what these great black folks have done." You know, let's not see them as outcasts, as society would want to see them as being. Okay? We know, like I said in closing, that the rich and wealthy have plans to take over much of the northeast side. And again, I'm one of the only ones who reveal this information, and I'm going to do what I can to prevent that if I can. I had not been active over the years, but I'll tell you what, immediately I am now. Thank y'all very much, and I'm sure y'all hear from Michael Washington again. Have a good day.
All right, we have executive session. We'll be back.